Abby and Corey, can you confirm we have the applicants in?
We do.
Okay.
And we're just about live on YouTube. Okay, we're good.
Okay. Good afternoon and welcome back to the April 20th Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We are resuming the afternoon session with public hearing item number three. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on YouTube. So if you would like to watch the proceedings, you may do so at our YouTube channel. And if you would like to participate and testify in any of the public hearing items, please join the meeting at the estimated time shown on our agenda. And please also note that we are about a half an hour behind schedule. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala, to take us through the afternoon.
Thanks, Sarah. And as noted, we'll start up again with hearing item number three, LPC 21-05652, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1101, lot 73, 441, 14th Street in the Park Slope Historic District. This is a Romanesque revival-style row house designed by William Hawkins and built in 1890. And the application is to legalize modifications to a fence and areaway without LPC permits.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing and the staff will be presenting their presentation. So staff, you have now, you have control over the presentation. So you may be.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Elizabeth Fagan, Preservation Staff. The application before you today is to legalize work completed at the areaway fence and driveway in noncompliance within issued LPC permit. Here you'll see the conditions at the building before and after work. The work performed included widening the driveway and modifying the existing historic areaway fence by cutting the end section and installing the section of the fence on a hinge, removing a portion of the bluestone curbing to allow for the fence to swing open and closed and to provide access to the modified driveway. The building is located on the north side of 14th Street between Prospect Park West and Eighth Avenue in the Park Slope Historic District. To the immediate west of the house is a fenced playground yard for PS 107. Here are some streetscape views showing the context of the building within the block. This building is the only one on the block with a driveway and a garage. On the left, you can see here the 1940s tax photo showing the presence of the garage and the historic, historic areaway fencing here on the right side, as well as a gate across the driveway. Here in the 1980s tax photo, which does not show the gate, that was present in the 1940s tax photo. And you can also see the footprint of the original driveway, which aligned with the side of the end brick pier of the house. On the left of the car, there is currently a taller brick wall, which you'll see in subsequent photos, that was added sometime after the 1980s. Here are the existing conditions. Note that the historic, historic areaway fence was modified by cutting the end section back and removing the bluestone curb where that section was attached. The cut section of the fence was reinstalled on a hinge so that it can swing open to allow for cars to pass through. And you'll also note that the driveway here was widened. Note that the paving replacement and other, other areaway work was included in a past LPC permit. Here's a close-up view of the work again. Again, the areaway fence can be swung out and it can also rest on a removable bluestone curb when it's in this closed position. And also to reiterate, the driveway previously aligned with the side brick wall of the house and has now been pushed over towards the street by a couple of feet. Again, here are additional photos of the existing conditions and a close-up view of that hinged operation. And the modifications were made by the owner in order to improve access and clearance space when parking and opening of car doors in the driveway. Driveways and garages were not common in this district at row houses. However, there are a couple examples of end row houses within the Park Slope Historic District with driveway space, such as this house on President Street, which also appears to have a movable gate to allow for driveway access. And with that, the owner is also here to provide additional details and answer any questions. So Avi, if you'd like, you can go ahead and unmute yourself if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you Commissioners. I don't have anything to add at this present time, but I'm willing to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions right now, so we'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Lisa Kersavage to take us through the testimony. Okay, thank you, Sarah. We have one hand raised. So Mary Shuford. And Mary, you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
Lisa, I wanted to testify on 165A St. Mark's Avenue. I apologize if my hand was raised. That was a mistake.
That's okay. Okay.
I'm ready for the next one. I'm sorry.
Okay. That's okay. Okay, and I don't see anybody with a hand raised, nor did anybody sign up.
Sorry, unmute.
Thank you. Yep, I've got it. Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We did receive a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board Six and they recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let me turn back to the applicant. Is there any final comment you'd like to make before we move into our discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay. And any final questions, Commissioners? Okay, so I am unmuting so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. And Commissioner, Commissioner Holford-Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second the motion.
All right, thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So as we can see, the areaway paving and fence were altered, as was explained, to accommodate the car. It already had a driveway and had this garage opening. So the portion of the fence that returned was put on a hinge and the paving adjusted as described. So let's start our discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Yeah. I, I have to say, I think that, you know, it's, the hinge is, doesn't seem to be an issue. And I see that it's necessary for the operation of, to get in and out of this space. And, you know, there was maybe a small amount of historic fabric, but it's, that had to be eliminated, but it's not significant. So I can support this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I can support this.
All right, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, you know, I have to say, I'm, you know, it's the Park Slope Historic District. It's a little bit shocking that the, the applicant had no idea that they needed to come to us for this. That said, our standard in these situations is would we have approved this in the first instance if it had been brought to us? And I think I would have. I would have found it appropriate. I think it's the right solution. But it's still, it's still appalling.
Yep. Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I can approve it. Thank you.
Commissioner Holford-Smith?
I can approve this as well. And I agree with John that this owner should have realized that they should have gotten approval first.
And Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with John as well. And I, I hope they were penalized somehow for doing this. But when I approach these things as a, as a new application, I think I would probably approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Likewise, yeah.
Commissioner Bland?
I would, had this been brought to us, as it should have been, I would have commented very inventive way and an appropriate way of dealing with the issues involved. So should have been brought to us, wasn't, but I think this is an excellent solution nonetheless.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, I think you were here for some of the presentation. Are you?
I saw it. I agree, it's fine.
Okay, all right. So, thank you. So yes, I think it is important that applicants and homeowners understand that they need to come to us in advance. In this case, the applicant preserved historic fabric, modifying it to accommodate the car, and a very limited amount of fabric was removed to adjust the fence and paving. And that work didn't detract from the significant features of the building. So in this case, it is appropriate, but please in the future remember to come to us. So I think we have a majority of Commissioners who would support this. Commissioner Lutfi, would you read the motion?
Sure. In the matter of LPC 21-05652, 441, 14th Street, Park Slope Historic District, Romanesque revival-style row house designed by William Hawkins and built in 1890, the application is to legalize modifications to a fence and areaway without landmarks preservation permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the addition of a hinged operation to a limited section of the historic areaway fence allows for practical use of the driveway while retaining significant historic fabric, that while widening the driveway resulted in a loss of a small section of historic areaway curbing, the remainder of the curbing remains intact, and that the alterations to the areaway do not detract from the building worth streetscape.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second it.
All right. Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford-Smith?
Aye.
Okay, ten in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
All right, so that's approved. Thank you. And please remember in the future to reach out to us before you do any work. All right, and we'll move to the next item now.
And the next item is number four, LPC 21-06488, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1144, lot 84, 165A St. Mark's Avenue in the Prospect Heights Historic District. This is a neo-grec style row house built circa 1877, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name for the record and you may begin the presentation.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Patrick Casey and I'm assisting Architect Graydon Yurk on this, as stated, the rear yard proposal at 165A St. Mark's Ave. So, oh, can I? There we go. So the page here shows our location. Street context shows our building there. We're right in the middle of the block. It's a little slow on my end. The next slide here shows our block plan. So you see there, we're in the middle there with our rear yard in the back there. All the blue here is three-story units. The pink buildings are the five stories that are just a couple lots away from ours. And the, the hashed areas in the back are the existing additions on the interior of the block. And you see the block next to ours is that yellow two-story. And there's several one-stories and a few, well, several one-stories on the, on the adjacent lots or looking across to Bergen Street. This is the existing rear yard. You can see there's an existing one-story currently. To the left of us is that existing two-story. And to the right are several one-stories. And then a view from our lot to the back of Bergen Street where you see several one-stories there. Few aerial photos showing our lot in yellow. And you can see the interior of the block is fairly lush. That's us in the yellow. This is the rear yard elevation showing the existing on the left with the one-story that's proposed to be removed. And our proposed two-story on the right with a, we're proposing to use a patina green Sheffield metal, where our thought is that the patina green will help integrate our addition with the greenery of the interior of the lot. And there's the stair down from the balcony there. And I can't seem to move to the next slide.
Have you clicked on the screen and then using your arrow keys?
Yes, I think it just moved.
Okay.
It seems to be a little bit of a lag for me, but. So this is the exterior elevation showing our proposed two-story in the middle, the existing two-story of our lot 83 on the left. And lot 85 has the one-story next to that. And the Sheffield metal, this is just a spec showing it's a standing seam, metal cladding, one and a half inch standing seam. And the existing building section showing the existing one-story in the rear that we're proposing to remove. And then the proposed two-story volume there. This is the volume study, existing on the left, proposed new on the right. And a quick rendering of the rear yard showing our proposed with the patina green cladding. And that's the gist of it. We're happy to receive questions. I believe Graydon and Mike Warshaw are on the line, I think. I'm not sure if they can chime in. If anyone has anyone, anything to add. Yes, I'm here.
Do you want to add something at this point?
No, I don't think so. We'll, we'll take questions. I, you know, I think that the, the addition addresses the client's desire to have, you know, more light and air, more living space. And I think Patrick mentioned, they're avid gardeners. So the, the idea was that this would, you know, blend in with the landscape. We want to, we want to, the intention is to have a very lush garden. And we wanted it to not be so much an addition as an extension of the landscape.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant at this time? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead. Just accept the request to unmute. You should be good to go.
Um, how does green work with the landscape? Where, where would you, would you be standing back at a donut, looking back at the back of the building? Or, I mean, I mean, green is fine, but I just, the analogy you're making with the landscape doesn't hold water for me somehow, you know?
For the, oh, sorry, please go ahead.
No, that's it. That's all.
So we have a cedum roof on the top. So the top is green, clover and different cedums. And then the, the railing is a mesh that will allow the vines to, to integrate to, in, in the railing. And, you know, there'd be hedges along the fences. So, you know, that, that would, that would come up to the building on the right side here where you see the green, the wall to the right of the window. And, and then it will have a canopy of trees.
So you're saying that the enclosure of the backyard, the wall of the backyard will be greenery, so that that whole exterior space will be green? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I don't think we have any other questions at this time, so we will move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, raise your virtual hand so we can identify you.
Lauren, I think you just called me.
I'm sorry, we, we are just about to do that. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Kersavage, who will move people in to speak. And in the order in which people signed up first. Lisa?
Sarah, I'll be doing the.
Oh, Anthony. Sorry, Anthony Fabry will be doing.
No problem. So we do have some signups. The first person I'll bring in is Mary Shuford. Mary, you should be in the meeting. You just have to unmute your microphone and turn on your camera if you wish to.
I have done that.
We can see you and hear you.
Okay. My name is Mary Shuford. I'm representing Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Council in the Prospect Heights Historic District. PHNDC finds that the massing of the proposed two-story extension, although relatively large, is acceptable within the existing context. While we recognize the architectural consistency of the overall design, the choice of Sheffield metal standing seam roofing material is not contextual with other adjacent row houses, nor with other buildings in the Prospect Heights Historic District.
Hi, is this Lauren?
Sorry, please go ahead.
Okay, the choice of the patina green color further calls attention to this. In response to this concern expressed by PHNDC at the CBA Land Use Committee meeting, the applicant proposed ash gray as an alternate color. PHNDC finds that ash gray would better blend with historical context, as might other muted colors such as Sierra Tan. Furthermore, for this discussion, the CBA PHNDC recommends recessing the Sheffield metal clad enclosure under the stairs to the backyard to reduce its prominence. We have no objection to the planned use of light-colored stucco on the party walls of the addition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next person I'll bring in is Simeon Okay, you should be in the meeting. Simeon, are you there? Oh, I'm not seeing him. Oh, there you are.
Sorry about that. Thought I was not muted. Got it.
Okay.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Simeon Baikoff, Historic District's Council. HTC found this proposal to be not very sympathetic in many ways. It is a two-story addition on a block where there are a few of those. The configuration of the openings on the rear facade are ungainly and the proposed materials are completely inappropriate to this neighborhood or truly any building within a designated historic district. We do not object to the notion of a rear yard addition to this building, but the combination of an inappropriateness in height, configuration, and materials is three strikes against this proposal. We'd recommend the proposal is rethought and reexamine. Perhaps one of these components can be stretched, but currently it's a case of too many bites and not enough apple. I also, just watching the presentation, I was a little confused by the designer. Is the whole thing meant to be some sort of green planter that plants would grow over? I, I, I just was curious about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is it for our signups, and I do not see any other hands raised for this item.
Okay, thank you. And, and Rich, did we receive any written testimony?
Yes, we received a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board Eight and they recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to turn back to the applicants and ask you to address the, if you'd like to address the comments raised in the testimony that we've just heard, you know, with respect to the materials and/or size. Or answer the question, I think you maybe already did, but answer the question about the integrated landscaping.
Sure. So the, the height is the same as the, the adjacent two-story extension. And we stepped it back to decrease its bulk. And it's, you know, it gives us a, a living on this 15 feet deep. So it, it, we, we made it rather small. And then it's got a four-foot balcony. So it's, you know, overall it's 19 feet out. The, I think one of the questions was, or statements was the window configuration is, it's, it's too, the windows are too large, if I'm not mistaken. We're taking the three windows above and combining that, you know, following the, the, the order of those to do a three-panel slider. Several buildings in the neighborhood have, have large glass extensions in the back. One across the street that's, is a five-story new extension. So there, there are, there are quite a few, you know, houses with these, with these steps, extensions in, in the block and, and area. And, you know, the objective was to, to get light into a, a house that's, you know, townhouses are dark in the middle. So we, we wanted to, to filter light in as much as we could. The material is, you know, if we were to look at precedent, I suppose the original extensions were often wood, right? Because they would have been outhouses and coal storage and so forth, which, which wouldn't be allowed now. The clients would love wood, but it's, you know, because it's combustible, we can't do that. So we thought this was, you know, a beautiful material that will have longevity and, and detailed very elegantly. And, you know, it is a, like I said, it's meant to be part of the landscape and not a, a building in a landscape so much. It's not a planter, but the, the roof is a planter. The roof is all cedum. And the, the railings can, can hold vines. So to that extent, it's, it's a, a living building, but otherwise it's, you know, the, the plants are around it. And then I think, I think that was all the questions, no?
I, I think so. I think, you know, the Prospect Heights Association, I think, was mostly concerned with the materiality of it, the window configuration. And, and I think HTC commented on the size as well as those items. And just to follow up on the size, can you talk about the depth of the addition? I know it's at two different planes. And does the, what, can you just speak to how deep each floor is and how that relates to what's around it?
Sure. The, and maybe Patrick has the, the dimensions of the other buildings. The, the parlor, the, the, the first floor, the house is, the interior is about 16 and a half feet wide. And we made it 15 feet deep. So it's a 15-foot extension. And then there's a, a shallow deck of, we had a much bigger, this, these, these gardens are much deeper than, than many on, on many blocks in Brooklyn. So we, originally we wanted to go much deeper. But we pulled it back and the deck is But we pulled it back and the deck is now just a space to stand and look at the garden, it's no longer a usable deck. So it's about four feet, so overall, it's the the addition is approximately 19 feet, probably 19 and a half to 20 on the outside. And that's, go ahead.
And how deep is the adjacent addition that is two stories?
Patrick, do you have that information on the two-story addition? It's about 17, I'd say it's about two feet less deep than ours, it's about 17 feet. And then to the right, to the south of us, two doors down is an extension that's about five to, five to eight feet longer than ours, that one is the longest.
Okay.
Which is on the other sides.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions? Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Sarah.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to be clear. So there's a longer, in this block or nearby this house, there's a longer first-story addition and a slightly shorter second-floor addition, did I hear that correctly?
Two doors to the south isn't, is an addition that's longer, yes, it's a one-story addition. The two-story addition adjacent to us on the north is the same height as ours, but it's it's about five, it's, if ours is 19 feet, theirs is about, I'd say this is somewhere between 15 and 17.
Okay, thank you.
And, but is your, your ground floor is 19 feet with the deck, the second floor is, did you say 17 feet?
15.
15 feet?
Yes.
So does it align with the second floor, the two-story addition adjacent to you?
Not quite, we're about
Okay.
Probably about 18 inches further.
And what is the full depth, what is the full depth of your lot?
Patrick, do you have that?
The lot's 130 feet from the front to the rear of the lot line.
Thank you, I know, I know those houses, thanks.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I think we will move to our discussion then, so Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you, Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. Commissioner Vice Chair Bland, since you are familiar with these houses, would you like to start the discussion?
Yes, I will. These are very deep lots, it's an abnormally deep lot for Brooklyn generally, 30 feet deeper than most. And the donut, as was illustrated from the photograph above, is quite intact. There are additions on the backs of several of the houses, if not the majority. This one is would not be the, if I understood this correct, it would not be the the longest, deepest addition on the first floor. And it's close to the deepest on the second floor. So I guess what I'm saying is because of the depth of these lots, it seems to me that this may be appropriate, a few feet less on the second-floor addition maybe would be better, let's wait and hear what other people say. Otherwise, I think the issue is the green patina. And it gets down maybe to a level of taste, which I don't think is exactly our purview, although it's not exactly our purview either, but it's a fine line. And I think maybe because this will be so much a private area, it, we may just go with it. I'm worried a little bit, it's too industrial a material, I mean, there's beautiful metal siding that is not so industrial. So again, I'd like to wait for others. My own taste would say, don't mix a green metal with the greenery of a beautiful rear garden, I don't, I don't think they go together, but that's that level of taste. It's not an egregious green, it's a muted green, but maybe it should be muted more and not be in the green family, but more in the gray family. But these are, these are the voice of a, of the first person opining, so let's see where we go.
Okay, and maybe just to sort of help further your thoughts on that, I think that historically, rear yard additions could be in a variety of materials, wood or brick or stucco, and we've certainly approved wood, brick and stucco, and even metal in the past.
Absolutely.
So that may help with the question of the material, and then I think it brings it down to the finish and how that fits within
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I think metal is fine. I might have chosen at more cost probably Corten or something like that, but nonetheless, metal could be fine, that's not the issue.
Okay, so it's really the patina? Okay, great, thank you, Commissioner Luttrell.
Thanks Fred for, you know, giving us a better context about the depth of the lot, that helps quite a bit. I think, really for me, just because there is a a building next to this proposed extension, that's gonna be project out a little less from an alignment standpoint in terms of the visuals of the backyard, it would be I think it would be great if the second floor could align with that as well. I don't have a problem with the metal, I do think it should be something more muted, like a gray color. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jefferson.
I think it's important to have the alignment, just, 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 it just makes sense. Why not align them? In terms of the concept of the courtyard, I thought the green had to do with vegetation and a concept, not a taste issue, but a concept of the courtyard. And then I find out it doesn't have any, there was no concept in the courtyard of green space or, you know, a volume made, made green, the walls and the back walls and the facade, so you might as well make it gray and, or gray was compatible with this these type of donut buildings. But I could, if the green, the green is if the green doesn't have a concept to stand with, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, thank you, and just to clarify on the alignment, the, are you, as Commissioner Luttrell suggested, aligning the second floor with the two-story addition and the first floor, which is below a deck that would come out that far, maybe, okay, it's sort of in the zone of the fenced-in area, is that comfortable for you? Okay, great, Commissioner Gustafson?
I think that the, I think the material, as far as I'm concerned, it's inappropriate, the I can't recall, although Commissioner Bland suggested that he has seen it, I have not seen it in in buildings of this type on a rear yard addition, so I don't think, I think it's atypical, so that's inappropriate. The massing, I think, is fine, particularly in light of what Commissioner Bland revealed to us about the depths of those yards. What bothers me more, though, is I don't think, I've never seen someone close in the stairway like this. And that, I think, is inappropriate, I think it would, the appearance would be much it would take away the emphasis on that stairway, you know, usually the stairways are, kind of disappear because of their, I guess, ephemeral nature, and with the boxing in of it, it makes it stand out, so I think that's inappropriate. And if they could just, they could, they could remove that.
Okay, thank you, and John, your comments were on the finish or on the material itself? The patinaed copper or as opposed to a different metal?
It's material and finish.
Okay, so would any metal be okay for you, or a different metal, I mean?
I'd have to, I don't think so, but I'd have to see it.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I don't know about everyone else, but I do not have a clue what this thing really looks like. I'm sorry, but this, I'm not sure if this so I should first say that I don't know that I have a concern about the material, metal siding or metal otherwise, I could, I could see that as being appropriate. I feel the same way about the patina green, but I sincerely don't know what this illustration is telling us, you know, the applicant made a point about, you know, talking about how it would be detailed, and I can't even conjure the detailing on it exactly, so I really feel that we would need to see this again in elevation to understand it, I agree with, with the others about the massing, the extent of the the addition into the yard, I think there is room for it, I think the space, the building can take it and the yard can take it, but again, I just don't know what the thing looks like, yet, I mean, okay, so this, in this drawing. All right, let me try again then, so vertical panels seems at just one place, at that rail height. Yeah, okay. Okay, if I squint and I try to imagine it, looking at this, even though, as Bill said, I've never imagined, I've never seen this kind of siding on any of our back rear yard additions, I think I can accept it then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Holford Smith?
In terms of the massing, I agree that the second story, second floor should align with the adjacent and that the ground floor can be the depth that it is. I don't really find that this, this material or finish is appropriate. I think it is too industrial, and I don't know how well you could detail it, especially when it comes up to be like parapet height, and how you cap that, and I think that's not really resolved in the details, and that's what Adi was thinking of in her comments. So I think detailing it in brick or stucco would be more appropriate. And I agree that the stair also should be an open stair, so that would be a lighter presence in the yard.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with the comments about the alignment of the second story. I think that the association that I have with painted metal standing seam siding is a different association than I would have if the material was of a more natural metal finish, whether it is a patinaed green of copper, which this is not, or if it was a turn coated metal or a galvanized or a Corten, like Fred had said. I think that what's, I don't think it's the metal, for me anyway, that makes this unusual, I think it's the the painted finish, and Anne is totally right, for them to get this level of, let's call it minimalism, on the detailing will require a fairly intensive deep dive into how these things are made, and it's certainly not the normal way that they are made. And, you know, the much more likely way that they're made is much grosser and more heavy-handed. That said, I really think that this falls within the scope of other rear yard additions that were much more radical and much more kind of atypical for rear yards. Full glass, glass storefront, glass curtain wall, so I don't, I don't think it's necessarily inappropriate. I just think it's unusual, and I would offer those comments as advice to the applicant as opposed to censure or withholding of my approval of it as is.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Devonshire?
I'm in an unenviable position on my block, in that people come up all the time and say, would you come and look at my blah, blah, blah? And I've looked at at least nine additions on my block on 10th Street that were in fact clad, they were originally just little crappy little outcroppings that had kitchens or bathrooms in them, and at some point around the turn of the 20th century, they were clad with a, it's not really a standing seam, it's a panel system. And it's got this little sort of triangular seam that runs vertically on it. Invariably, these things are still unpainted, but there are a bunch of them, so I've seen a lot of these things. It's not really off-putting for me to see a metal clad addition. I mean, this takes it a step further in that it's a two-story one, but I don't have a problem what I'm trying to say is I don't have a problem with it being clad in metal and a vertical sort of standing seam looking thing, that type of metal was made for, not for roofs, but for siding right around the turn of the 20th century. I'm fine with that, invariably, they have been galvanized and remain unpainted. And I would suggest that that is a more appropriate color, that sort of neutral gray than the patina green. I agree with my colleagues about the setting back to match the surface of the adjoining one, I also agree with the statement about leaving the stair open, not cladding that cheek.
Okay, great, thank you, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with most of the comments that the second floor should be set back. And then Michael Goldblum and Michael Devonshire's comments are fine, and also where there's, also the stairs should remain open.
Okay, all right, so I think we have, I think, not complete support for the metal, but I think we have enough support to vote out approval with modifications on a metal finish, but working with the staff on a more natural or neutral finish, an open stair and setting the second floor back. So let me go ahead and make that motion, and then I'll see, we'll do the vote and see if I got that right, okay. So in the matter of docket number 21-06488, 165A St. Mark's Avenue in the Prospect Heights Historic District, and the Ogrex style rowhouse built circa 1877. And this is an application to construct a rear yard addition, and I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the rear addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the added volume of the proposed two-story addition and terrace will not overwhelm the building or the surrounding buildings, that the ground floor of the addition will not project further into the rear yard than other existing one-story rear additions on this block, and will not diminish the central green space, which in this case features yards with exceptionally deep, features properties with exceptionally deep yards, and that the fenestration and solid-to-void ratio of the rear facade of the addition will maintain the scale and character of a rowhouse, thereby helping it to remain harmonious within its context, and that the top floor of the rear facade will remain intact, thereby preserving the relationship between this building and the adjacent buildings in the row. However, I find that the second floor of the addition projects further into the rear yard than most other multi-story additions within the block, including the one next door, and that the finish of the addition is not typical of other rear yard additions found in this block or other block, historic, blocks with historic additions, and that the clad terrace parapet and, well, that the enclosed underside of the rear yard access there as unnecessary volume to the addition. Therefore, I recommend that the projection of this, at the second floor of the addition be reduced to align with the two-story neighbor to the east, that the finish of the metal be revised to be more neutral or natural, neutral gray or natural, and that, or a brick material, if they choose to go that way. And that, um, or a, a brick material if they choose to go that way. And that, um, the detailing of the standing seam as it, um, is, uh, as it relates to the facade and the coping be resolved with, working with staff. And, um, that the rear yard access stair remain open and the cladding or enclosing it be eliminated from the proposal. Okay, Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Seconded.
Okay, let's see. Rich, will you call the vote?
Derek Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 10 in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
That's approved with those modifications. Please continue to work with the staff and we'll move to the next item now.
The next item is number five, LPC 20 dash 08713. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 830, lot 37, 250 Fifth Avenue in the Madison Square North Historic District. This is a neoclassical-style bank building designed by McKimme, Nead and White and built in 1907 with additions built in 1913 and 1928. The application is to replace entrance and fill and install marquees.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Um, the applicant now has control of the slides. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Thank you. Uh, hi, my name is Sean Bosler and I'm with Perkins Eastbound Architects. And, um, as, as mentioned, this application is for, uh, the, um, uh, the application of the entrance on 28th Street and, uh, the entrance on, uh, Fifth Avenue. Uh, just to give a little bit of, uh, context of this, of this building, 250 Fifth Avenue is, uh, is currently under construction. Um, this was an application that, uh, went in front of the commission in 2000, for approval in 2012. Uh, it was presented by plat buyer Devel and White. Uh, and it included the, um, the, the renovation of a existing McKimme, Nead and White building on the corner of 28th Street and, uh, Fifth Avenue. And, uh, the addition of a new 23-story hotel, uh, tower, uh, on 28th Street above a, a two-story, uh, existing, uh, historic facade. Uh, it was also to convert, uh, the, the use to a, uh, to a new, uh, luxury hotel. Uh, since that time, uh, we've, we've, uh, been working with staff and also have come i- in front of the, uh, the commission, uh, to, uh, to evolve the, the project as it's, as it's, uh, sort of taken form, uh, including the complete restoration of the, the building, the, the historic building, um, with new windows and, and things like that. Uh, since the beginning, since the beginning, the project has also evolved. And so this application is, is for the new entrances because we, we now know, you know, what the, the level of the hotel is and the quality of the restaurants and things like that. So the application is, is, um, uh, with that. Just a little historic context, this is the, uh, the existing building, uh, which was, was on the corner, uh, of 28th and, and Fifth. It had several additions to it over time. Um, it was originally the Second Avenue Bank. Uh, it then had a, a new addition, uh, on Fifth Avenue and then a two-story addition eventually on, on 28th Street. Uh, initially, the, the main entrance to the bank was on Fifth Avenue. Um, it's sort of evolved over time. Uh, the, the, the picture that you see on the far right, uh, was, was one of the latest ones, which had these beautiful sort of wooden metal doors, uh, which, uh, were, were the, the, the main entrance. On the 28th Street entrance, um, the, the entrance, uh, tip did not have a canopy on it. One was added later, um, and it was, was sort of in the middle of the building on, on 28th Street. Just, uh, location, again, on the corner of, of 28th and, and Fifth. And, and what, what I would like to start with is, is the 28th Street, uh, entry first. Just to, to note, uh, the 2012 application, um, uh, since the, the, the original entrance on, on 28th Street had been closed many years ago, uh, the, the, the original approval was to, was to include a new entrance in this two-story, uh, existing, uh, facade here, which is, which is preserved. Uh, this was the original condition many years ago, which was not very sightly, uh, was the old entrance to a boxing gym. And then since the, the program really wasn't, wasn't quite defined, uh, uh, in, in 2012, uh, the, the, the application was to, uh, to sort of put a, a, a canopy and an entrance there, uh, which was similar to what had been, uh, uh, ultimately on, uh, on the 28th Street, uh, facade previously. Uh, in 2016, uh, working with Landmark staff, we evolved that a little bit. Uh, but again, the, the program of the hotel and the quality of the hotel was, was not really defined. And, uh, the, the approval was, it was really an aluminum storefront with a very, very, uh, sort of simple, uh, canopy on it. Uh, now it, it is a five-star luxury hotel, uh, with a, a, a very well-known brand and chef, uh, which is coming in here. So this proposal, uh, what we're presenting today is for, uh, something that's a much more in harmony with, we feel, the historic context of the building, but also, uh, indicative of what the quality and elegance of the, of the hotel and use will be. And this, this will be a, uh, bronze doors, uh, with a lot more, you know, very refined detail to it. And, and, uh, a, a, a much, much better, we feel, uh, uh, sort of transom above it, uh, which, which is a reminiscent of, of, uh, some of the historical precedents that we found. Uh, this is just zooming in a little bit on the 28th Street entrance. So a very clean, uh, nice, simple, uh, uh, entrance here with, um, uh, a canopy that comes out. The size of the canopy is, is about the same size of what was, what was, uh, approved previously, but has a little bit more detail and a little bit more elegance to it. And it also allows us to, to have a bit of signage, uh, on it. It should be noted that behind this entrance is a, is a d- double-height vestibule, which is, which is really quite nice. So the whole idea is that the entrance really does have a prominence to it and a, and a nice glow and an elegance to it. We're also proposing with this application to reintroduce the, uh, uh, the, the sconces, uh, on either side. Uh, these would be, uh, replicated of, of the historic gas sconces that, that used to be there. Um, so a nice little detail again to sort of hearken back to the historic features that were on the building, uh, previously. And also, uh, proposing very simple signage here that would denote the name of the hotel, uh, as well as, as all the functional things like the ADA entrance, uh, buttons and, and, and things like that. This is an elevation, uh, showing the entrance. Uh, this is in the same location that was approved in 2012, so there's no, no change or anything, uh, to that. Uh, but just, just a note, the historical photo that you saw earlier, the, the original entrance of the building was here, but in, in 2012, it was approved, uh, by the commission to, uh, to move the entrance here. Sort of zooming in a little bit further, a couple of renderings, uh, of, of the entrance. Uh, and as you can see, it's a very nice, uh, thin, uh, tall doors here with the, the small side lights to it. And then the, the elegant transom that, that sits out in, in front of it. And, um, everything is, is bronze. It's a, uh, bronze doors. And, um, and then with the signage and the, the lights next to it. Moving on to the Fifth Avenue entry, um, in 2012, when, when this was presented, uh, there, there was not a proposal for a new entrance, uh, here because at the time, the tenant was a bank, uh, an old bank. Uh, they had a, a sort of a terrible-looking aluminum canopy on it and they were going to actually remain as a tenant. The bank, the bank, uh, portion was actually not going to be part of the hotel with the original 2012 application. Uh, as you can see, this was, this was what was presented at, to, to the, uh, to the commission in, in 2012 because the, the, the tenant was actually going to stay there. So fast forward to where we are today, uh, the, the, the owner of the building has, has been able to take this back. This is, uh, now we've actually restored the inside of the double-height, uh, banking hall and it's going to be this fantastic restaurant there. So this proposal is to, is to, uh, uh, provide a new entrance for the restaurant and the hotel off of Fifth Avenue. Uh, just zooming in on the, uh, the, uh, in 2016, uh, whenever the, the tenant did move out, we put a placeholder in, in the drawings, uh, just until, uh, the program sort of evolved itself. And, and as I mentioned, now there is a well-known restaurant and chef that's going to be in here. So, uh, this, this is the current proposal, uh, which is a new metal doors with this sort of frosted glass light in it. And, uh, the idea is what we wanted to do is be inspired from what was there historically. If you remember, there were these, these wonderful wooden metal doors, had this incredible pattern on it. And so what we've done is sort of taken that and, and turned it into, uh, a new entrance here, which is metal and, and glass. We've also added a, a small eyebrow on, on top of here, uh, which is within the opening and, um, and not connected to the building or, or with any tiebacks. And, and, uh, the, it, the, this is, this is something new to the building, but it's, it's also something that we feel is important for the use of it, uh, which is, which is a restaurant. And it's also something that does have, have precedent along Fifth Avenue. So the, the new door transom and, uh, and, uh, a small, uh, marquee here, uh, on, on Fifth Avenue, uh, which is all contained within the opening. Uh, we're also reintroducing the, uh, the, the sconces on other side of the doors. Uh, we're working with the, uh, local artisan to, uh, replicate what was there before. Uh, we feel also like we've done on 28th Street. This is a very nice detail, uh, to, uh, to, to bring back. Uh, zooming in a little bit closer here, you can see some of the detail. And again, behind this door is a, is a double-height vestibule that you come into. And then, uh, there's a couple of steps and a ramp on one side that brings you up into this, this gorgeous double-height, uh, restaurant, which was the old banking hall. But again, the, the, the sort of similar to the transom that we're, uh, we're proposing on 28th Street, uh, we'd like to create that same detail here. Uh, and, uh, and then the doors have, are inspired from the historical precedent that was there before. And then again, you can see the, um, the sconces on either side, uh, which will be replicas, uh, as close as we can get them to, uh, to what was, what was there before. And then an elevation, uh, showing, uh, the Fifth Avenue entrance, uh, would look like, all within the existing opening. Uh, really beautiful, you know, what would appear very tall doors, but, uh, um, uh, with that, that's, that's a pattern that, that had been, uh, there before. And it's, it's metal with the frosted glass, uh, inlay to it. So you'll have a little bit of, uh, uh, of transparency through there and you'll see the light, uh, through there at night. But the canopy also gives us the opportunity to have, um, uh, a, a little bit of elegant signage on the side of it, uh, for the name of the, the restaurant that will be there and also the address, uh, of, of the building. I'll quickly go through these, but, uh, as we were working through this, uh, with, on our own research and with staff, uh, we wanted to look at other precedents in the city, uh, particularly in the neighborhood, uh, where, where, uh, there's, there's, uh, canopies on, on historic buildings. And so these were some of them that, that we looked at. Uh, this is right up the street, uh, right, right, right down the street, about a block away. But we, we did feel it was important to have something sort of contained within the entrance and not something that, that, uh, sort of screamed out or, or attracted itself, uh, too much. And also that there are precedents on Fifth Avenue, uh, for, for these small canopies as long as they, you know, don't become, you know, too large. And again, this is in, in the neighborhood, um, on Fifth Avenue. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Letfy, please go ahead. If you can accept the request to unmute, I think you're still muted.
Okay, great. Thanks so much for, uh, your presentation. I, I was, uh, wondering if, if you ever considered, uh, just, uh, recreating the original transoms?
We couldn't find any precedent for the original transoms. Uh, there was something that was there on 28th Street where the, the, the entrance to the gym was. Uh, and it was, it was sort of beat up and, and, uh, we, we couldn't find if there were, in any of the historic folder, when this was added. Uh, it, it seemed like the, the original building had, uh, much more of a sort of a glass entrance on, on Fifth Avenue. And then those, those large doors were added later. And then on 28th Street, what was interesting was there used to be this really beautiful stoop, uh, with these sort of bollards and, and, and the light wells were, were, were open with this gorgeous railing around it. Then it was all filled in. And then that, that canopy was, was added, but it never had a, had a transom. And so we, we really couldn't find anything that we felt was strong enough to try to replicate. So we, we wanted, we, we assumed that there, you know, because there was something with spindles there, that we wanted to, to at least, uh, give a nod back to something, but we, we, we couldn't find enough detail to, to, to try to replicate anything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, uh, I'm just, um, maybe you said it, but the photograph that you have with the canopy, on the 28th Street side, wh- what about that historic canopy?
On 28th Street?
You have a historic photograph, um, on page three.
Keeps. Just trying to back up here. It's not being cooperative.
Page three, yeah. That one.
This one.
Yeah. I, I'm just asking, it existed, right? It was there before and?
Yes, it wa- it was something that it existed. It was added on probably in the 19, 1913 or something like that.
Right. I'm just asking, is that what you're using for precedent? If not, why not?
We, we are using that for precedence and, um, uh, which, which it was a metal, a metal canopy. And, uh, but we're, we're looking at, at to making it just a little bit, little bit deeper. So we can have, uh, so in, in size, it's about the same and with the same tiebacks. Uh, but, but, uh, a little bit, little bit different, a little bit deeper detail on the edge. Uh, so we'll be able to get some proper signage on there.
Ah, so it's a signage issue. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I don't know if we have any other questions right now, so we will, uh, turn to public testimony and we may have more after that. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And we will start with anyone who signed up in advance. And I will turn it over to Anthony Fabre to take us through the speakers.
Thank you. Um, we do have some signups for this item. The first person I will bring in is George Calderaro, followed by Simeon Bankoff. George, you should be in the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm George Calderaro, a board member of the 29th Street Neighborhood Association, the local community organization and the Victorian Society in New York, as well as a neighbor of 250 Fifth Avenue. We believe the work to be appropriate in that the proposed marquees have historic precedent on the building and are of scale, design and materials compatible with the building's style, that the proposed doors and fan light are also compatible in material and design and that the proposed symmetrical placement of lights and the modest scale of the signs relate well to the building's formality and will not be obtrusive. The proposed changes are remarkably respectful of the character and formality of this wonderful building. We must note that our enthusiastic support of this restoration and adaptive reuse of this magnificent building is bittersweet. This area of Fifth Avenue is part of the 29th Street Neighborhood Association's proposal for an expansion of the Madison Square North Historic District put forth several times to the commission over the past decade. Since this largely ignored proposal was ma- made, we have lost many comparable designation-worthy buildings that are now vacant lots, making our neighborhood and the areas surrounding this building reminiscent of post-war London. These include the great and demolished Bancroft Building, which has been a vacant lot in the middle of midtown Manhattan for more than six years, the remarkable Bozart's Caskel and Caskel Building, which has been a vacant lot in the middle of midtown Manhattan for more than four years, and the now presumably doomed Grand 1890 Renwick-designed Demerit Building, which will inevitably become a vacant lot across from the Empire State Building for years to come if the LPC does not act now. The final demo permit has not been approved. Each of these magnificent Each of these magnificent buildings was the subject of vociferous campaigns for landmark designation supported by every elected official, community board and thousands of community members, but not the current or previous LPC or current city administration. Now our community is facing the loss of up to 50 significant buildings under threat by the Cuomo Vornado Empire District that will level blocks around Madison Square Garden, including the Grand Hotel Pennsylvania, a vestige of the original Penn Station in another monumental act of vandalism as described by Ada Louise Huxtable on the destruction of the original Penn Station to create 20 million square feet of unnecessary offices and/or more likely vacant lots in our neighborhood. We hope that the commission and its overseers at City Hall can see and learn from these examples, both good and awful, and protect what's left of our community's great built heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Simeon Bankoff, who I'll bring in. Simeon, you should be in the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Simeon Bankoff is Barack District's Council. HG's, um, agency recommends approval of this application, finding this to be a sensitive treatment of an important building and noting that the proposed design is action improvement over a previously approved scheme. Uh, we would like to add that members of our public review committee have been watching this project's progress and compliment the applicant on their efforts to save the 28th Street facade. Given all this evidence of the benefits of preservation for historic buildings and streetscape, we would be remiss in not mentioning our continued disappointment in the lack of protections granted to similar buildings north of here in the proposed but undesignated Madison Square North Historic District extension. We are aware the LPC has received a number of modest proposals for an extension to the existing historic district. We find it incomprehensible that a meritorious extension cannot be found amid all these great buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, there are no, no more hands raised for this item and we do not have any more signups.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board of Five and they recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I, I would like to turn back to the applicant. I think, uh, much of the testimony was not exactly related to your application, but to the extent that you would like to address anything, please go ahead.
Uh, we, we appreciate the, uh, the support on this and, uh, uh, this has been a fabulous project. And we, if anybody has the chance, the, the restoration of the, the McKimme and White Building, uh, which now that the scaffolding is down, it's, it's just absolutely stunning. So, um, we, we're, we're really happy to be part of this job.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? For the applicant? All right, not seeing any, I am, uh, moving to unmute you all so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Augustusson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And, um, I do, I, I did want to just start out noting that Commissioner Holford Smith is recused on this item. She hasn't been present for the entire, uh, meeting and, um, won't be present for the discussion. So, um, let's go ahead and begin our discussion on these proposed changes to the entrances and the canopies. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Um, well, let's see. I, I actually think that, uh, a, a lot of this is excellent. I'm, I, I might have wanted for the, um, the detailing on the grill to, to be a little bit more, um, referencing the historic, but I think it's, it's going to be beautiful. I do still though have a problem with the marquee, I think, or, a- a- and the canopy both. Um, I think there's something that is just a little bit awkward about the proportions and about the kind of the depth of, of the canopy itself. And I'm, I'm wondering what others will have to say. It's relatively minor, but I, I do have some concern about it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Oh.
No. Sorry. Sorry about that. I just noticed that she was recused. Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
I agree with Adi. I think that the applicant can work with staff to, uh, maybe take a little bit of a deeper dive into McKimme and White's work, this, the history of this building, uh, and try, try to refine the details, um, uh, and proportions, but otherwise I think it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire. All right. Um, okay, let's move on to Commissioner Chen. I think Devonshire had to step out.
I, I agree with, uh, with the, both the commissioners' comments. I think that to the degree possible, that, uh, the historic transom, um, should be, uh, returned or replicated.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I think it's, um, acceptable and approvable and appropriate as is.
Commissioner Lexi?
Um, I think, um, this is a really thoughtful, uh, and sensitive design that, that, that goes a long way to paying respect to what was there. And I think that, in, I mean, it would have been nice if, um, it, you were able to replicate the transom, but, but this works quite well. The transom, I think the canopy, um, proportions are okay. And I think the signage, uh, fits in there quite nicely in terms of proportions. I like the fact that you, uh, replicated the gas lights and all in all. Uh, I think this is a wonderful project and I look forward to seeing the whole thing when it's done.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, I, I think it's appropriate, but I do agree that the delicacy of the door and the transom and, and the canopy, the canopy is a little bit heavy because they had to put the lettering in. So if there's a way that they could get that, that delicacy, it could be beautiful. But it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Uh, I think it's, I agree with Commissioner Bland. It's appropriate as is.
Okay, all right. So I think where we are is we have, um, we have a few commissioners who are comfortable as is, but I think in order to have a motion to vote this out today, we would need to vote it, uh, vote to approve it with the modifications that the applicant continue to work with staff to refine the details and proportions of the transom and canopy. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you be able to read that motion?
Yes, I just lost the screen for a second. Here we go. Okay. Um, sorry. Yes. In the matter of LPC 2008713, 250 Fifth Avenue, Madison Square North Historic District, a neoclassical style bank building designed by McKimme, Meaden, White and built in 1907 with additions built in 1913 and 1928, the application is to replace entrance infill and install marquees. I note the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Madison Square North Historic District. And I recommend approval with some modifications that the, that except for the removal of the decorative transom, none of the proposed work will eliminate or damage any significant architectural features and that the proposed Fifth Avenue entrance infill will match the historic infill in terms of placement, operation, materials and overall proportions, and that the gridded glazing will be evocative of the original ornament. That the proposed West 28th Street doors and side panels will be in keeping with the infill and historically found at the bank buildings of this age and style in terms of their placement, operation, materials and overall proportions. That the marquees will recall the historic marquee which existed at the West 28th Street facade in terms of the materials and finishes and that they are simple in design, well scaled to the entrances and detailed in way that harmonizes with the facade. That the placement of the marquees of Fifth Avenue facade and the historic rear extension will correspond to primary entrances and be compatible with the hierarchical organization of the facades. And that the signage will be simply designed, well scaled to the entrances, typical in terms of material and placement and installed at plain masonry, helping it remain a secondary harmonious presence. However, I find that the removal of the historic transom on the West 28th Street entrance has eliminated a significant architectural feature which would be returned, which should be returned or replicated to the greatest extent possible and that the, um, applicant should work with staff to resolve this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? Oh, you're muted.
I second it.
Thank you. Rich, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire is not present. Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lexi?
Aye.
Okay, with eight in favor and one not present, the motion carries.
And one recused.
Oh, recused, yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, please continue to work with the staff. And we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
The next item is hearing item number six, LPC 21 dash 02124, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1127, lot 15, 33 West 74th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A Renaissance revival style row house with Northern Renaissance elements designed by Tom and Wilson and built in 1889. And the application is to replace windows and modify window openings.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Um, the applicants now have control of the presentation. So please state your name for the record and you may begin. Brett, you just need to click on your screen.
Yeah, I found it. I found it. I was looking for it. Um, yeah, hi. Um, I'm Brett Kearney, Brunner Kearney Architects. We're the architects for the project at 33 West 74th Street, um, uh, in the Upper West Side of Manhattan. Uh, our project is for the renovation of the building, including in, but, um, the scope of the work for, for the commission today is replacement of the front facade windows and the alteration in the rear facade openings and the window replacement. Uh, it's the understanding that the interior work and bulkhead replacement, um, has been reviewed by, by staff. Um, let's see, how do I? There we go. Um, there's a location plan. It's located at the north side of West 74th Street, uh, mid-block between Central Park West and Columbus Avenue. It's located in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District designated in 1990. Um, these are the existing plot plans. The building is a row house, um, a lot 20 by 102. Uh, the front facade is approximately 13 feet back from the sidewalk and the stoop, um, and eight feet from the property line, approximately. Okay. This is the front facade photographs, um, from same facade, different angles, slightly, um, different lighting conditions. Um, the existing row house is this one here. It's, um, brownstone base with, uh, brownstone and brick and the upper two floors. It's four floors and a basement level. Um, the existing windows on the front facade are wood double hung, one over ones. Um, and at the parlor level is an unequal one over one, uh, where the meeting rail is here behind this stone, uh, spandrel. Uh, so it appears to be a transom, but actually it's an unequal, um, uh, double hung. Um, this is the, there we go. This is the context of the building in the street. Um, it was built, um, in 1889 as a group, uh, with five other townhouses and the, uh, ABA configuration, so ABA, BA. Our building is this building here, the easternmost B of the group. Um, and if we go to the next one, here's a, this is a photo montage showing our building related to, uh, the context. Like I said, this, these five here were all built as a group. Um, this building was renovated in 1969. These other buildings, uh, had their stoops removed at some point. Uh, these buildings had their lower floor windows, uh, changed. Uh, you can see that. Oops. As well here, you can see that the parlor floor, um, condition where they have the casement windows. Uh, this is again a street view of the whole block. The block is, um, a little, um, uh, little, uh, fairly uniform, but there are some modern interventions that, um, interrupt the block. Um, uh, and, uh, the cross street is a different district and it's a more uniform building with, uh, built slightly later with, um, these are all typically French casement windows. Um, these are some details of our facade. Um, this is our parlor level and you can see this brownstone and the existing, uh, windows. And some more details. And this is the basement level. Uh, historic photos, uh, tax photos. Again, this is our building. Again, then this, these, um, kit windows are changed. It's sometime, uh, probably 1939 when this building was converted to apartments. Um, again, this is the designation photos. It has not, uh, not much changed except for this building here, 37, the windows were changed prior to designation. All right, so this is our proposal. Uh, it's a rendering in context of the block. We are showing, uh, the replacement windows of, um, wood inswen, inswing casement windows, um, uh, at all, uh, all levels. While this may not be typical of the block, they had, like I said, as I pointed out earlier, there were some examples of casements and divided lights used on the block. This, um, like I said, the adjacent building where the, the stoop was removed, what happens historically, uh, a few buildings on the block that, uh, where the, Kate, no, door opening was, uh, replaced with this casement windows and the parlor floor was matched with casement windows as well. We were just trying to, uh, we felt that our building was a little unique, um, a little very ornate and it's, um, uh, it's, uh, probably the only one that keeps the brownstone and the brick. It's very visible, um, out of these row houses. And we felt we wanted to, uh, supplement that uniqueness with, um, the casement windows. And we, we felt that, uh, well, so not supplement the building, but without detracting to the building. Uh, so this is another rendering without the context. It's just a little clearer, what the building, uh, how that'll, um, look in the building. Um, and we can go again, placing the current, the proposed rendering in context of the, uh, street facade. And again, it's just the full block. And this is the, um, uh, elevation showing, um, comparing the existing and the proposed. These are all proposed inswing kit, French casements. Uh, actually these building, these windows here on the bow are actually curved. They would be, we would, uh, do curved sashes as well. Okay, yeah, I think we're, and also just showing, removing the gates here at the parlor level. Um, these are details, um, showing, uh, the windows. Uh, this is the parlor level. So this is the stone spandrel, the uneven double hung. And here we're proposing a transom and, uh, inswing casement, uh, in the same opening. Uh, none of the openings are changing on the front facade. And, uh, again, all typical, um, detail showing, uh, replacing the double hongs with the, the French casements. Uh, go on ahead. And then for the rear facade. then for the rear facade, this is showing the existing conditions of the rear facade. This is our building here. There's a existing rear addition. And there's two projecting bay windows at the first floor and at the second floor. You can see them here as well. Again, some more details. This is those two projecting bay windows. And this is just typical window detail of a facade. So our proposed work is to enlarge the existing windows and regularize them. They're, right now, the existing windows are a little random as far as their sizes. So we're trying to keep the same size across the floors. And then add, connect those two bay windows I connected, pointed out, connect them into the one continuous bay with a spandrel across the middle at the floor line and have door opening here to a balcony and opening here to a Juliet balcony and transom windows. And at this floor, at this, the roof of the setback or the rear yard extension have a door. So the doors here, third floor, second floor, first floor, and then at the basement level for all these hot rolled steel doors. And the proposed windows would be all, again, wood in-swing casement windows. And these are renderings without the context. Again, just showing the proposed work, the bay window, enlarged openings, regularized openings, and so forth. And just again, you can see where the, where it's just pink and not the mortar lines. That's the areas that we're showing enlarged. And this is proposed. And this is just a detail. This is the typical bay window. There was a corbel at the bottom of each bay. We'll be extending that bay projection out all the way down to the base balcony at the first floor. And this is the typical window, existing wood window, wood double-hung converting it to a casement, in-swing French casement. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Anthony to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. We do have a few signups for this item. The first person I will bring in is Michelle Parker from Community Board Seven.
Good afternoon, Michelle Parker, co-chair of the Preservation Committee at Community Board Seven, where this application lies. When we heard this application, the bulkhead was included. So our resolution will include what we said about the bulkhead, which I understand now was discussed at staff level. This application was voted favorably by the Community Board by a vote of 26, 8, 11, and 0. Not unanimous, but I wanted to bring up three, three points that we discussed both at board level and committee level. One was the metal stairway, which is going to give access to the garden, although we, we did decide that would be appropriate. There was a discussion about the metal stairway to the, to the garden. We did, there was some discussion about the corbeling, which we understand would be removed, but the alternative we found acceptable. And then finally, we had discussions about the front facade casement windows, which because the applicant told us they didn't have any information about how they used to look, but that, but that casement windows could be in keeping with the other buildings in the neighborhood, we decided as a whole that this, in consideration of the facts presented at our hearing, that the application was appropriate to the character of the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I will bring up is Sean Chrisandy. Sean, you should be in the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sean Chrisandy for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee often advocates for wood-framed windows and multi-light glazing, but in all those cases, they were once there originally. In this instance, the original one-over-one double-hung windows are not in dispute. One aspect of this application are the window openings. While our committee would prefer the retention of the window corbels, the other window opening modifications are reasonable. The other aspect is the design and function of the windows. Although Tom and Wilson were prolific on the Upper West Side, they're only one of at least 10 firms working on this block in a range of Queen Anne, Neo-Gothic, Georgian Revival, and Renaissance Revival styles, in this case even with Northern Renaissance elements. This mix will allow the insertion of the proposed wood-framed French casement multi-light windows to blend into the block without significant disruption, but ultimately they are still an unnecessary alteration. As purists, we would support maintaining or replicating and replacing the original wood windows with respective profiles and brick molds for the new modified openings in kind. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person signed up is George Calderaro, and I will bring him in now. George, you should be in the meeting.
George Calderaro, Chair of the Preservation Committee of the Victorian Society in New York. The Victorian Society is commenting on the proposed window replacement at the front facade. The high-style Renaissance Revival Row of 1889 by Tom and Wilson was built with one-over-one wood windows at all floors, except for the single light windows at the parlor floor separated by masonry transom bar from the single light transoms above. This is documented in the designation report and can be further verified by the tax photos provided, which indicate that by 1939, this commit condition remained at all the houses except at the adjacent number 35 with multi-light casements installed at the parlor floor only, most likely at the time the stoop was removed. The multi-light windows at number 37, none of which appear to be casements, are later and pre-designation. The original one-over-one windows with single pane parlor floor windows at this building were not accidents, but part of the architect's original design. These are the windows that should remain or be replaced in kind if necessary. Multi-light casements are neither historically nor aesthetically correct for this building. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no more signups for this item, and I do not see any more hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
No other additional comments that weren't already heard.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant and see if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
I think we said, you know, we felt this building was unique and we feel that, you know, like I said, while it's not original or typical, we felt that it would be complement the building without detracting from it. I think we, yes, as far as the casement replacement of the case, double-hongs with the casements.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right. And I am beginning to unmute or request to unmute is so that we can move to our discussion. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Still moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So this includes the replacement of windows on the front facade with a configuration that is different than the original configuration, and then altering masonry openings on the rear facade, namely at the top floor and then at the three adjacent to the L. So Commissioner Hallford Smith, would you like to start this one?
Yes, thank you. So this is an unusual case because normally we're fighting for a multi-pane configuration. Someone wants to put in one-over-ones. And here we have original one-over-ones and the applicant wants to put in multi-pane. So it's very ironic. But I think that, just as we typically do, and the original configuration is the most appropriate. I think, you know, it was designed that way. The curved glass was intentional. And because the facade is so ornate, I think that's one of the reasons that a single, a single pane or one-over-one window configuration was chosen by the architects here. So I believe that they should stick to that configuration and retain the original windows if at all possible on the front. On the rear, I think they have a little more latitude as we typically allow. And we could go to the rear elevation, which may fix. I think the enlargement of the windows in the L is, is appropriate, as well as the creation of a taller double-height effect window on the new, you know, the new rear window opening. And I think the margin of the windows at the second to top floor is fine as well. But I think that the original window configuration should remain on the top to maintain the integrity of the, of the row. And I think this there is fine.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with every single thing Ann said.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Who am I to disagree?
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
I'm gonna keep it rolling, same thing. I think that's almost correctly.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree, especially about the front, where the one-over-ones are still there. And I agree that there's more latitude in the back. And I concur with what Ann said.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with Commissioner Ann.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Same here.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I do as well. Thank you.
Okay, great. I think we're all in agreement with Commissioner Hallford Smith. So Commissioner Hallford Smith, would you like to read the motion?
In the matter of LPC 21-02124, 33 West 40, sorry, 33 West 74th Street, Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, a Renaissance Revival style rowhouse with Northern Renaissance elements designed by Tom and Wilson and built in 1889. The application is to replace windows and modify window openings. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval of modifications, finding changes at the rear facade that the proposed work will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that enlarging and combining masonry openings at the first and second floors of the rear facade will not remove any significant architectural features other than a limited amount of corbel brickwork, that the presence of the combined masonry opening at the parlor and second floors will not diminish the residential character of the building. And that the proposed work at the lower floors will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building on the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. However, I find that the proposed enlargement of the top floor opening will eliminate the original punched opening and two bay-wide frustration pattern found at the top floor of the rear, of the rear facades within this row, and will detract from the building's relationship with other houses in the row. Therefore, I recommend that the top floor window openings at the rear facade be retained. Regarding window changes on the front facade, I recommend denial, finding that although some of the houses within this row have been altered with the removal of their original box stoops and creation of ground floor entrances, this is the only remaining house with intact original features and historic wood double-hung windows with curved sash at the projecting bay. And the proposed casement windows at this, at the primary facade will be incompatible with the original frustration on this house and in this row. Therefore, I recommend that the extant historic windows with curved sash be retained and repaired if feasible, and that all new windows on the primary facade match the configuration, operation, details, and finish of the historic window.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
All right. Rich, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Deventer? I think he's, he might have left.
He's gone, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hallford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with nine in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
All right. So that's approved with those modifications. Please continue to work with the staff. And we'll move to the next item, which I believe is the beginning of our public meeting agenda. Correct?
Yes, indeed. So the first public meeting item is number one. This is LPC 21-04036, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 644, lot 43, 63 to 65 Ganzavort Street, aka 22 Little West 12th Street in the Ganzavort Market Historic District, a garage designed by Albert K. Wilson and built in 1938 to 39. The application is to construct a rooftop addition, install storefront infill, and replace doors. And this was last presented at the public hearing of March 9, 2021, and no action was taken at that time.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. The applicants now have control of the screen, so please state your name for the record. Make sure you click on your screen and then you may begin.
I think we need to open the proceedings first unless the staff is going to do an introduction.
Yeah. Okay, so let's open the proceedings now. And if the staff wants to introduce it, they find, that's fine, but we'll, we'll go ahead and do this now. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Still moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, so the proceedings are open. If the staff would like to introduce it, that's fine. And then the applicants can take it from there.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Elizabeth Fagan, Preservation Staff. As Corey mentioned, at the public hearing of March 9, 2021, the Commissioners reviewed a proposal to install a rooftop addition, enlarging the ground floor storefront opening to match the historic condition, and installing new infill. At that time, most of the Commissioners were supportive of the presence of a rooftop addition at this building, given the district's waves of adaptive reuse, and that the Commission has allowed for more flexibility for additions and change in this district. However, most Commissioners felt that the addition should be reduced in size in order to not overwhelm the building and to have it read as more of a skylight. And at the ground floor, most Commissioners were supportive of returning the garage opening to its original size, but felt that the proposed storefront infill needed to reference the garage typology of the building better. And the applicants have returned with revisions to these comments and are here to walk you through the proposal.
Hi, my name is David Cubic. I'm a partner at BK SK Architects. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. So as we begin, this project is located at 63 Ganzavort. One key fact here on this site plan on the upper left is 63 Ganzavort is shown here in gray. It's actually one of three buildings on a single zoning lot with 22 and 28 Little West 12th Street to our north. And the key fact with that is that there is a small 11-foot wide tail to the 22 Little West 12th Street building that extends down and is part of the 63 Ganzavort, you know, overall facade. So this, this last east portion is technically part of 22 Little West 12th Street. Here on the bottom right is an Here on the bottom right is an existing elevation of the overall facade and a picture above of 22 Little West 12th Street to our north. Looking back at historic photos, starting here in 1933, there was actually a three-story building that was demolished and replaced in 1940 with the current structure. This is a one-story, no-style painted brick facade in the designation report. And as you might guess, we don't have a better tax photo because this was sort of the back of the overall zoning lot. So we're showing you photos that we've been able to gather from neighboring properties. As you can see in this photo, this is the first glimpse, but it actually had one very large garage opening on the west side and some smaller openings on the right side, which we'll get into in more detail, the designation report here on the lower left with some of the modified openings that currently exist. And then in a current photo of the building taken earlier this year, you can see some of the bricks been cleaned. And these openings since designation have been maintained. Looking a little more closely at some of the historic photos, again here now you can see a little bit better, the one very large auto garage opening that was filled with these very tall kind of heroic painted wood doors that had kind of a transom row of glass at the top in this kind of X-bracing pattern. And then here on the right, you can see another view of it where these doors march along. And this eastern storefront opening exists today in the original size, as well as this egress door that serves a fire stair. So here you can see our previous proposal and current proposal for a two-story commercial building. There are a few general concepts common to both the previous and current proposals. First and most importantly, we're showing the existing brick facade to be restored with its original openings and painted white appearance. In the large original opening, we're introducing a painted wood storefront that reflects some of the detail and composition of the original garage doors, which we'll talk about. And above is a wood frame sloping skylight that aligns with the masonry opening below. On the east side is a setback standing seam zinc and frosted glass mechanical screen that's concealing a very large rooftop cooling unit that exists there on the roof. There's also a new painted wood egress door in that original small opening and a new aluminum and glass storefront entrance to the 22 Little West 12th portion commercial space. And I'd like to say thank the Commissioners for all of their constructive feedback during our first presentation. And to summarize, we heard clearly that while second story addition did not seem inappropriate, the revised proposal should reduce in size, likely by pushing this glass volume back, reducing its height, and sloping it some more. And this would prevent the addition from overpowering the first floor and help keep the historic single-story structure as the primary reading of the building. We also heard from some that the storefront did not feel sufficiently garage-like. And perhaps the, perhaps extending the language from above through the storefront was kind of antithetical to the goal of a separate storefront and a distinct skylight above. So as you can see in the new proposal, the storefront infill is actually divided into five bays, different from the four bays above. And these five bays are the original divisions of the garage doors that we just saw in the historic photos. And again, introducing that transom line from those doors and something that just appeal, appears a little bit more flat in its appearance, a little bit more straightforward, a kind of simple rhythm to the storefront, not as heavily articulated, not trying to extend the language so that this feels a little bit more garage-like in its nature and is not trying to visually relate directly to the skylight above. The other key fact to this new storefront is that the middle three bays are actually a painted wood bi-fold system. So they can open and stack on the left edge of those three bays and on the right edge of those three bays on the interior, creating one large opening on some of those nice temperate soldier, shoulder season days. So we can really get a very large opening and bring back kind of that story of a garage door. Just focusing for a minute on the current proposal, other observations that we had were regarding the best treatment for the brick facade. We know that there was some conversation regarding, you know, a different approach. Perhaps there's a way to kind of keep the patina of the brick facade that's there now. We just want to look back and remind everyone that actually the eastern portion, portion as part of 22 Little West 12th has already been restored and cleaned. And so there's no patina remaining. And we don't really feel confident we could recreate that. But also looking at this brick, it was pretty clear that this was not a particularly nice face brick that was ever really meant to be exposed. And, you know, it was always conceived of as a painted brick facade. So we still believe that that's the best course of action to kind of restore the original character of the facade. And then a few other details as well, looking more closely at this photo, you can see the bottom of the brick facade was actually painted black. It's kind of a visual baseboard, if you will, to the, or plinth for this facade, which also explains the sort of lifted height of this egress door. So we're proposing that we bring back that painted black base up to the sill of the egress door. And then also, again, looking at these wood doors, you can see that on the, the, the end bay of these garage doors, it was actually split into two. Presumably, this was the sort of everyday human door and not, not the openings used to bring cars in and out. And that felt like a great sort of fact to bring back where we could locate the primary entrance for the storefront facade. So on our first and fifth bay, we're showing the primary entrance to this storefront in keeping with those divisions. And then again, the second, third, and fourth bays are the ones that could open when possible. And again, we kind of elaborated on this in more detail on the first presentation, just kind of condensing this to one slide. The first, the kind of district skylights, there are many visible and invisible rooftop additions that have these kind of glass skylight volume-like languages. Also, almost directly across the street from us on 46 Ganzavort, there's a similar slope skylight that was also historically framed in wood and kind of sat right behind the masonry kind of utilitarian facade. So there are nice examples already in the district of that. Looking at the storefronts, there's a, we found a great range from things that are extremely minimalist, like what you see above, to things like on our neighbors that are much more heavier, articulated and, and traditional in nature. But it felt like these two examples were perhaps most informative for us as they are kind of light brick buildings, likely loading bays, garage door openings, they're large. And their storefronts tend to be on the more minimal side. They tend to be a little bit more flat and not too articulated to kind of let that powerful big brick opening be the dominant reading, which is what we tried to do. And then just again, understanding the context in which we're operating, that there's obviously a lot of growth and change, both pre-designation and post-designation in this district. And particularly on Ganzavort Street, there's lots of history of buildings growing and shrinking and growing again. And we think that it's appropriate for this building to take a second story addition in that context. Looking here, one of the things we just want to touch upon again is that the goal here with this second story addition was to have it appear more as kind of a crowning object pulled away from the sides of the, the building. So it does not feel like a true visual extension of the street wall, but rather a kind of secondary object that will always allow the primary reading of the building to be this historic one-story brick structure. Looking a little more closely, we achieved this smaller skylight by doing a few things. As I mentioned, we pushed it back two feet, increased its slope, reduced it in height, also took six inches out of the second floor dimension to allow it to appear smaller, as you can see here. This is just another view. And the skylight, like before, has similar articulation where we're showing and kind of celebrating this very kind of utilitarian wood structure that you'd often find in some of these historic skylights and introducing some X-bracing, which was, was very much needed for this wood structure, but also nicely recall some of the X-bracing of the storefront doors. Here's just a before and after section through. You can see the reduction in height and how it's been pushed back from the existing brick facade. Just an overall axonometric view, so you can see how the components come together. And again, you can see how this mechanical screen is, is now hiding the view of that large rooftop unit. This is a existing storefront and, or sorry, existing elevation and proposed, current proposed elevation showing that reduced second story volume as compared to, on the following page, that same drawing for the previously proposed. These are visibility studies. As we presented last time, in these views, we've also just wanted to show it to you in a, in a different appearance with those bi-fold doors open, so you can get a sense of how this storefront can transform and really bring back that story of the auto repair garage. Again, further down the street. And from the east side. We presented this last time, there's no change from, from our previous presentation, but there is one moment on the north, from the north side on Little West 12th Street, where you can kind of see between these two buildings. And there's a small portion of our bulkhead highlighted here in red that will be visible. These are the mock-up photographs from the last presentation. And we've kind of overlaid in this red tone the new proposed volume of, of that second story addition for comparison. And you can see how it's shorter and pushed back and the slope has increased. These are existing and proposed sections. You can see that similar relationship. And this is that bulkhead that's sitting back, both elevator and stair. These kind of for the record, but we have worked through all of these details, carefully selecting the window system and coordinating the structural details to feel quite confident in what we're showing you. Here you can see that wood frame from the renderings behind the glass coming down onto the second floor structure. Here is a dedicated storefront drawing, again, showing you the five bays, which were the historic proportions. And you can see here dashed how those door leaves will stack up on the interior on that first and fifth bay. And just a representation of the materials, the, the painted gray for the storefront, the standing seam for the bulkheads, the white painted brick facade, and the Douglas fir wood framing for the skylight.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions? Any questions at all for the applicant? All right. Rich, do we have any additional written comments that were submitted for the revised proposal?
Yes, we do. We received three letters, still in opposition.
Right, which I believe those were all distributed to us as well.
Correct.
Okay. All right, if there are no final questions, I think we will move to our discussion. So as was stated in the presentation, the last time we saw this, I think that all Commissioners felt that the, that a presence of an addition would be appropriate here, but that the size and the character of this addition was overwhelming to the building and that it should read as more secondary and more skylight-like. And so it's been set back and lowered to respond to those comments. And I think everybody thought it was great to restore the original garage door opening to its original size. Some people were comfortable with the storefront that's previously proposed. Some felt that they were too delicate and needed a little more substance. And others, I think, felt that they should evoke the garage doors a little bit more closely. And so the proportions and framing have been changed to sort of evoke the proportions of the garage doors. So let's have a discussion about those changes and how they have addressed your concerns. Commissioner Lutfi, I think with this one, you, you were one of the Commissioners who were comfortable with the idea of storefronts here. So how, how are you feeling with the revised changes today?
I'd like to commend the applicant for, you know, whenever our applicants listen to the comments from the Commissioners, it's there, it, it's much appreciated. And in this particular situation, I think these moves have been very positive. So over, overall, I think the proportions of the project work better. This idea of pushing the mass back a little on the, you know, on top and bringing it down as well makes it more, makes it fit better within the, the total piece. The idea that some of my colleagues mentioned about trying to make the doors at the street level more garage-like, I, I think you've heard that comment as well and responded appropriately. I, I love the fact that, that the, that the doors in the center can literally open up and you can almost feel like you could drive a car in there, although that's never going to happen. But that you can also access the almost sides is, is great. And I think the, the materiality, the materials, the change in materials and colors also work very well. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I find it appropriate. I just, I still think the skyline, especially the wood part, really still dominant, too dominant for me. But, you know, the, the problem for me is the textural quality of this historic district, the textural feeling. And if you look at the surrounding buildings around it, you have this texture, this, this feeling of. And, and this building is, is a little jewelry box fitting into that. And it's acceptable, but I think we need to rethink the textual material quality of some of these buildings, particularly in this historic district, because it's getting to be something else, in my view.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
I think they responded to our, our comments and so I find it appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I have to say that when I see this most recent proposal with the changes next to the previous, I actually think that the previous proposal, the, any number of things, the bulkheads, the, the proportions of the, of the doors as taller. Maybe if you, if you don't mind going to the page that shows both of them together, thank you. And even, and even the, the sort of the, the windows above, the roof element is actually more, I don't know, it's more convincing in the previous version, I'm afraid to say. The, they look more like sort of storefronts in the, in my mind, like what more of what the historic storefront might have looked like in this area. But I have to say, when I look at the thing in totality, it is still the, the very long extending the, what was once a kind of a garage door to this long storefront. I think, I think that that gesture does not suit the street and the district as well as it could. So, so I'm, so I'm really in trouble here because, you know, I, I know we made a number of proposals. I, I felt the last time that it was, that this kind of storefront, long storefront was more, seemed to me to look like a different place, whether that's LA or even a different part of, of New York. But it just, I don't think it really works here. And I don't think it's really appropriate to extend it as long as they have. And now the previous proposal is more convincing to me than this one. So I'm, I'm afraid I'm having some difficulties with it.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Um, I think that the revised proposal
I think that the revised proposal, the the skylight pushed back, lowered and a steeper angle is is more appropriate. It's more more sort of skylight looking than the than the previous. I think I understand what Adi is saying, is I think the previous was a little more interesting. But I don't think it was appropriate. So there's a kind of quandary there. I understand their consent about the storefront. And I see the relationship that they've tried to make with the garage door, so that was pretty subtle. I do think it's better that the the door storefront is a different color than the skylight. So I think that's better. I still think it looks very cleaned up. So I would be in favor of not painting it. And I took a I tried to zoom in on the brick from the portion that they had stripped. And I think that would that gives it much more the texture that Everard was talking about and it blends in much better with the district. And part of the problem we will maybe having is that the stark crisp whiteness is really in contrast with the buildings around it.
Okay, so even though it was historically painted white, I think that the faded paint is something that's happened over time that you think reflects the character better. Okay.
Maybe it's a whitewash and not a paint. The brick reads through.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Goldblum.
All right, thank you. This is an interesting one for me, too. And I what I'm what I hear, when I hear everyone else talking, the way I internalize it is 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 the the challenge to parse the difference between liking it as architecture and finding it appropriate as is historic and historic new construction in historic district or modification of an existing building in historic district. I think that I agree 100% with what Adi is saying and what Anne had suggested in terms of making it a better building. But I think it's appropriate as is. I think that the suggestions that they gave would make it better. I'm personally fine with the painted brick. I think the painted brick tends to not look very good for very long anyway. So I think it'll it'll get ratty over time and that's okay. I think that for me, the biggest issue with the doors, and I hear what Adi is saying about the LA feel of it. I think it has to do with the very, very heavy transom and the de-emphasis on the vertical that that heavy transom creates, which is very different from the rhythm of the doors that were there back in the day. And so I would recommend that they consider working with the staff to modify the proportions of the transom bar and the piers, which were independent in the previous version. I don't think they need to be independent, but I think that a vertical emphasis that recalled the proportions of the original would be an improvement, but I would vote for it as is.
Sorry, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I agree with Michael Goldblum as well as Anne Hope Smith. I think the skylight is much more modest this time. I think it's improved. And I can I can deem it as appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Bland, I know you weren't here last time, but I think you've heard the discussion.
I kept thinking, have I seen this before? Did I? All right, so I'm seeing it for the first time, but I can see the before and after. And I think a lot of it is better. I think the reduced skylight is considerably better. But you know, when Anne was describing the clean cleaned up, those were exactly the words I was going to use. And it I don't think it has anything to do with anything other than the paint, even though I understand there's a historic photo that shows white paint. But when you combine everything else, all the new storefront materials and the skylight and all and all, that white paint just sets it off as something alien. And I think several people mentioned it, but my brain was heading right where Anne said, not white paint, but maybe a whitewash that would let the brick come through and in its unevenness and its kind of crappy qualitiness. But still whitewash it out a little bit. I think you can achieve what you need to clean it up a bit. Apparently that's what they want. But it'll it'll fit in better. I think the white white is just wrong at this point, given the whole context of the historic district. So I would be in favor of everything as is if they could just whitewash rather than paint white. I know that Commissioner Goldblum said it'll get crappy, but you know, the minute it does, I think a restaurant like this is going to repaint it. So I don't think it's gonna, you know, that that'll it'll continue to be too white in in my judgment.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I think, right, it's the the combination of all of the new elements along with the white paint that give it a a character of sort of newness that is not consistent with the you know, we're just trying to sort of take the kind of intangible grittiness of the neighborhood and put it into actual language. So maybe the, you know, the sort of ad hoc quality that resulted from the layers of alterations in this district. And that's not really represented in something that looks so thought through and wrapped up with all of the new elements. So I think where we are is we have enough commissioners to vote to approve it with a modification to change the white paint to a white whitewash. And and we will, I think, try to do that as a motion and take a vote and see where we are. And I know, Jeanne, you were comfortable with it as is, but would you be willing to make that motion with that modification?
I actually think it's a very good idea because to be honest, in the very first rendition, I couldn't, I was having a problem with the white, but just went with it. So I think it's a great idea. Okay. In the matter of LPC 21-04036, 63-65 Gansport Street, AKA 22 Little West 12th Street, Gambort Market Historic District. A garage designed by Albert K. Wilson and built in 1938, 39, the application is constructed rooftop addition. I know that the Gansport Market Historic District is characterized by waves of adaptive reuse that significantly changed the appearance of many of the buildings and resulted in alterations in building heights and provided greater visibility of rooftop features. And that since the district's designation in 2003, buildings have adapted, have continued to adapt and now represent varied uses such as retail restaurants, galleries and offices. I recommend approval find with modifications finding that the proposed work will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features, that the surrounding street scape has a variety of building types and heights which support supports the presence of a visible addition, that the materials and design of the proposed addition featuring a sloped glass curtain wall system with wood and metal mullions, metal cross bracing and standing seams and panels will evoke industrial skylights found in the district and will be compatible with the character of the building's utilitarian garage use. That the addition will be set back from the Gansport Street facade with the glass curtain wall sloped toward the rear of the building, therefore the addition will be subservient to the historic building and not overwhelm the facade. That the proposed bulkhead will not only be moderately visible from the north on Little West 12th Street through a gap in the street wall and seen in conjunction with taller background buildings and therefore will not detract from the building. That the removal of plain brick masonry and nonhistoric infill at the ground floor will return the garage openings and facade closer to their historic size and appearance. That the proposed white painted facade with black painted base will return return the building closer to its original appearance as evidenced by historic photographs. That the configuration and materials of the painted wood and glass storefront infill will be in keeping with other ground floor infill found within the district and that the folding operation of the doors will recall and reinforce the building's historic garage typology, that the contemporary design of the metal and glass entrance infill at the eastern opening is in keeping keeping with the building's utilitarian character. And that the work will support the special architectural line historic character of the building and the Gansport Market Historic District. I recommend that the applicant work with staff to do a whitewash on the facade of the building instead of white paint to help it fit in better texturally with the a character of the district.
Thank you, and Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion? I second it. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Nay.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson. Did Commissioner Gustafson leave for the day, I believe?
Oh, he yeah, he did have to leave.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
What's okay, okay, with my mind shut down for a second.
We made a motion.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Commissioner Luttrell.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with seven in favor and one opposed and I guess multiple not present, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved with that modification. Please continue to work with the staff and we'll move to the next public meeting item.
Thank you very much. The next item is number two, LPC 21-02715. An application for a certificate of appropriateness, number of Manhattan, block 567, lot 18. 24 East 10th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. A re revival style house built in 1844. The application is to construct additions and remove studio window and shutters. This was last presented at the public hearing of February 23rd, 2021, and no action was taken at that time.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the meeting and the staff will introduce the project after the proceedings are opened.
Yeah, I'm muted. Let's go ahead and make a motion, a motion to open the proceedings. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to do that?
Don't, so moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Luttrell, would you second that motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the proceedings are open.
Great, thank you.
And the applicant begin, yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Dina Task Winter Preservation Staff. As Corey noted, this application was originally brought forth at the February 23rd public hearing and no action was taken at that time. Commissioners will recall that there were two major components to the proposal. The first was to reverse early 20th century modifications in order to bring the building closer to its original 1840s design, including removing shutters and paint at the primary facade and removing the studio window. Commissioner Goldblum had asked staff to weigh in on the significance of the 20th century alterations. We consulted with our research department and the consensus was that Greenwich Village isn't a completely cohesive 19th century district. It has layers of history as well as different building types, ages, et cetera, ranging from its original development through its 20th century bohemian and artists' cultural history, which is acknowledged and celebrated in the designation report. Early 20th century changes such as the addition of stucco or paint and shutters to facades and studio windows at top floors or roofs, similar to what you see at 24 East 10th Street, are tied into this layering of history. In some cases, such as this one, old and new features are mixed. Thus appropriateness can be determined on a case by case basis. And the commission has previously looked at the degree to which the 20th century changes have impacted the facade design and the character of the street for context. Past commission level action on buildings with a similar level of early 20th century alterations do include stripping paint. However, studio windows have almost always been retained independent of other work at the facade. At the public hearing of February 23rd, the applicants were proposing to strip the paint and remove the shutters. Commissioner comments were mixed regarding the merits of retaining the existing shutters, restoring the historic shutter type or removing the shutters entirely. Now, the applicants are still proposing to remove paint and shutters, but to then install louvered shutters to reflect a prototypical historic design at the original pintles. The majority of commissioners agreed that the studio window is a significant feature and that it should be retained or perhaps may be modified. The applicants are now proposing to reconstruct and reconfigure a false studio window in the same location while replacing its canted rear wall with a vertical wall to allow for increased square footage at the proposed rooftop terrace. Commissioners will also note that the applicants are proposing to replace the original 1840s windows at the primary facade. And finally, the second component of the scope is the proposed rear yard additions and rear facade alterations. The original proposal included a full height partial width L connecting to a two-story backhouse and one-story courtyard. Commissioners expressed that the height and massing of the additions overwhelmed the building. And in addition to there being too much bulk, several comments were made regarding the extent and details of the proposed fenestration. Several commissioners questioned whether the courtyard should be flipped to face the inner courts of the other buildings within the block. In response, the applicant team has reduced the height of the additions and further refined the design. They're here to now walk you through the details of the proposal. Thank you. You may proceed, applicants.
Thank you, Commissioners and Landmark staff for hearing our application today. My name is Jackie Poudu Valen. I'm the preservation consultant for this project. I'm here today with John Wool and Kevin Blusiewitz of Stephen Harris Architects. When we last presented this project, as Dina just described, the proposal was at the front facade to remove the shutters and replace the windows, to remove the skylight that's visible in conjunction with the front facade, to replace the existing rooftop addition and put mechanicals on top of it and to construct rear additions. The intent of the proposal was and still is to more closely return the front facade to its original mid 19th century appearance and to create an addition at the rear that relates to the development pattern of additions within this block and to the tradition of building backhouses at the rears of lots within this district. Next slide, please. This house is located at the northeastern edge of the Greenwich Village Historic District, where its proximity to University Place gives it an allowable FAR that is unusual for a row house. The house stands near the southwest corner of University. And it abuts a sheer wall of the 13-story apartment building that is at the at that corner. Next slide, please. And just to briefly recap again, as Dina just described, some of the the commissioner comments we got at the hearing, we were asked to either keep or modify the skylight to keep the existing shutters or to come back with more research on those shutters and to and to consider restoring the wood windows. Next slide, please. At the rear, we were instructed to reconsider the bulk of the addition in terms of height and massing, its fenestration and general character, and to emphasize more of a cascade of volumes and to soften the overall design to be more in keeping with the treatment of large window openings within the interior of this block. Next slide, please. We've made a number of changes to the proposal in response to your comments on February 23rd. Here to discuss those changes is John Wool of Stephen Harris Architects. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you will see here on the front facade, we are proposing to install 19th century shutters. These are based on images both from adjacent blocks as well as documented shutters from Habs drawings of adjacent Washington Square. The studio window remains as seen from the public thoroughfare. This is going to be rebuilt, but as seen from the public right away, this will look as it does now. We have changed the way that it terminates in the back in order to create a little bit more space, a little more usable space. Next. This again shows both the existing what we previously proposed and where we are now. Next. As regards the windows, we had a window analysis done. And we have found that 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 while the windows are mostly original, the condition is very poor. Only five of the 10 windows actually operate. Two of the windows in the basement have been replaced or partially replaced. Glazing has been replaced throughout. There's been damage to the wood profiles. There's gapping that is occurring. And and we would strongly ask you to consider allowing us to replace them with. And, and we would strongly ask you to consider allowing us to replace them with period-appropriate windows. Next. These are both images of the existing 19th century pintles that we discovered, which are not the ones that are being used to support the current shutters that are there. Next. Images of the roof, just to again document the existing skylight, as well as show some of the adjacent context of the roof scape. Next. Again, rooftop drawing, both existing and proposed. So on the existing, up above, you'll see the skylight in place there. The proposed keeps that same skylight but removes the back chamfer. Next. In the rear, the context again, as Jackie described, just to remind you, we have a 13-story building here at the end. We have unique zoning on this lot that allows for significant lot coverage. And we have a context of donuts here that's, that's very interesting but very diverse. One thing that did come to mind is if you go to the lowest pane in the middle, you'll see 19 East 9th Street, which has a good deal of industrial sash in the rear extension, which is part of the vocabulary that we're using in our proposed rear extension. Again, just to remind you, the very large architectural opening that you see on the right exists in this donut as well. Next. Existing side, next. This was the original proposal. And here is the reduction. The reduction removes a full floor from the rooftop, the rear extension, half a floor from the next floor below that, and then significantly reconfigures the upper floor of the backhouse to both introduce additional character elements responding to artist's studio windows on adjacent blocks, as well as breaking it down into a series of smaller masses. The little artist's studio, and then a little greenhouse that connects it to the rear boot extension. We've also introduced recessed panels of masonry into the sidewalls in order to be able to bring scale and more character to the rear addition. Next. Again, this was the original proposal, next. This now is the revised proposal, introducing a completely different character to that top floor that we feel is appropriate, as seen in other artist studios constructed in this district. Again, you'll see the reduction on the boot on the rear, and then reduction in the height of the rear piece, as well as not extending it to the side lot line. Next. This was the original proposal, next. This is the revised proposal. The commissioners talked a good deal about cascading, and we have tried to incorporate that by breaking the volumes down and by staggering the massing on the rear. There'd also been a request, I believe, that we potentially try to flip where the way the court works. Unfortunately, because of the neighbor's rear extension, that ends up creating a very enclosed inner court with a very, very narrow opening to the larger donut. And since we can't control that neighbor's boot, we, we feel strongly that this massing is the appropriate massing for the site. Next. Existing condition and the currently proposed condition. Next. This is the massing that we had presented to you previously. Again, as you can see on the upper right corner, the neighbor's extension comes out significantly, and so flipping this didn't really yield much, because it became a very, very narrow tiny slot that was a very enclosed court. Next. This is the revised proposal, showing some materiality and indicating the recessed masonry panels, as well as the stepping and cascading of the rear extension. Next. Again, both the existing house in red, the previous in blue, and the current, as you can see, shown in the section. Next. Again, in context, this is cutting through the courtyard. Next. And this then is the current proposal for both the front and the rear. Thank you.
Do we have any questions, Commissioners? The changes that have been proposed? All right. Rich, I think we did also receive some written comments on this item as well.
Yes, so we received a letter in opposition from Village Preservation, as well as from the Victorian Society, but all with a different kind of issues regarding the rear addition or the front facade.
Okay, right, and those letters have all been shared with the commissioners as well. Okay, so if there are no other questions, I think we'll move to our discussion. And we'll begin that in a minute, and I think as was presented, you know, the last time we saw this, there was concern about the removal of the windows at the parlor floor, and the size and extent of the proposed rear alt addition, with suggestions about reducing it, breaking it up, and/or flipping it, as mentioned, and also concerns about the removal of the skylight on the roof. So the applicants have talked about each of these, each of these concerns, and presented some changes. So let's begin our discussion. Commissioner, okay. Commissioner Hallford Smith, would you like to start this one?
Actually, I wasn't here last time. I'm seeing it for the first time, so maybe, maybe someone who saw-
Yeah. Let me start with someone who was here. Okay. Commissioner Jefferson, I think you were here, and I think you felt that, that the addition at the back should be reduced, and I think you sort of were intrigued by the idea of flipping it as well, to the other side to create the courtyard on the flip side. And I think keeping the skylight was also important to you, and I think you, though, were, I think, sort of torn on the shutters and hadn't come to a conclusion on that, and now they're proposing new shutters. Would you like to start?
Yes. Let's start with the shutters. I, I, I accept the shutters. I think they're appropriate. I have no problem with the shut- I do, let me start by saying that this is a very sophisticated design in terms of plans and section. It's really, really quite interesting fundamentally. I, I do think that the size and massing of the rear yard addition is still too big, and should be reduced in some, and if you go to the axonometric, that shows a reduction, the section that shows the reduction. Go ahead, go back, go back one, this one. And you see the reduction, but there are four floors, and then- Now the cascading starts on the third floor. And then there's this new kind of greenhouse effect, and it's changed the proportion, but it still feels extremely, still too heavy for me, and I can't figure out how to solve that. I, I kept on thinking, perhaps if the, if the third floor- beginning of the- and the greenhouse was removed, it would work better. And in this little inner courtyard, the massing would be less heavy, but I am troubled by it. I still don't see, it feels heavy, and I don't know how to reduce that. I think the windows on the sides are appropriate. I mean, there's enough of a gap between the 11-story building and this building, so it's fine for me. But I, I do, I, I do like the way the architecture is, but I, still unresolved about the size. And this cutback that they have in the brick recessed brick panel detail, I don't know what that means. So, but the, I thought at one point that the greenhouse would, would work, this little small little object sitting on the roof, but in fact, it, it doesn't do much for me either.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I, you know, it's all, it all reads, it's so beautiful, and it's going to be so beautiful, but I, I do think it's a bit, I don't know, maybe the issue of it's kind of, it feels like a slightly, slightly overgrown. And I'm trying to figure out where exactly, I think the most, where, where it might be adjusted to reduce a bit, and I think it has to do with the lot line windows. I know that seems sort of the last thing, but it might be that that's where things need to sort of return to, to, to the size and the proportion of the historic, and then maybe, I don't know, I have a real problem with it, because it is, everything is so tastefully done, and I, and it, its own internal proportion system, proportional system makes sense. I, I'm not sure if I agree with Commissioner Jefferson that it is too heavy. I, I just think that it's, it has a certain kind of grandeur, state-like aspect about it, that seems aggressive or something, but I, but beyond that, I just think it's also well done, so I, I'm, I have to say, I'm, I, I would approve, I would approve it as it's presented. I'm sorry to be so-
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks for putting that in my lap, okay. I agree with, with some of what Adi said, not that she agreed with what she said, but I think that the, I think the lot line windows are a good key, and this is a great way to view it. I think that that big lot line window under, you know, in the brick just looks disproportionate in terms of the scale of the courtyard, even considering the grandiose arched window that, that they returned to point out. I think that a reconsideration of that as something that would be more appropriate to a courtyard, even this courtyard would be, would be a step in the right direction. Otherwise, as, as somebody who felt that the flip was the way to go last time, I think that this has solved a lot of problems, and I think that from a scale point of view, I really like this view, because what it does is it shows that the tail, the two-story addition, relates to the other infill objects at the rear of the court. I think that their cascade effect, quote-unquote, was, was effective. I think that the project would be, I think pavilionization of that little box on top of the wing is effective in creating a scale relationship with the rest of the courtyard, even though it is very big. I think that the applicant should, however, cut the L back so that it aligns with the adjacent L. That's the porch, that's the kind of, the, the extension of the tail that, that has the green around it. I think that that should cut back to align with the neighbor, and I think that the top floor windows, if you look at this view, you see that you have the little windows on, on the two buildings to the, to the left, on the axonometric, and I think this building had similar windows. I would, I would request that the, the opening widths be retained for all three, and that the windows themselves, the window openings themselves be retained for the two to the right. But otherwise, I think that it works. I really do think that it's a significant improvement in the courtyard, and for what is a very unusual donut, I think that this, this works.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I think he's gone.
That's right, of course. Commissioner Bland, sorry about that.
Well, whoever said it was complex is absolutely right, and I think that's kind of the, the secret to its success. You know, in the village and Upper East Side, Upper West Side, there's a certain magisterial quality to the street facades. They were planned, they were organized, they were part of a system often. And then over time, the, the donuts, particularly in these high-dense areas of Manhattan brownstones, became Italian villages. I mean, there's just a jumble of stuff happening back there, and it's kind of wonderful, I think. And I think that's what this is in the rear, so the aspect of cascading, as we suggested to the architect, has really been adhered to here, and I think very successfully so. I think it was right to reduce the scale from what we originally saw. I do think that in, in this image, the, the picture on the upper right, those three big lot line windows are wrong. Maybe one should be retained or something like that, but the three of them is just too much. Otherwise, you know, I'm kind of like with Adi. I come around to say, you know, it's kind of great. And I, I think I can accept it more or less, or I would say as, as is. They did retain, I guess they retained, the, the artist's skylight. I mean, it's still there, or even if it's rebuilt, it's not used. And I think the shutters are okay on, on the front, so I'm, I'm in the appropriate camp.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutze?
So I definitely think this has moved forward in a positive way. First of all, I'm fine with the windows at the front. That's the easy part. You know, if there hadn't been, if the neighbor, I like the idea of cascading, but the truth of the matter is if the neighbor hadn't been there, I would have suggested that, that first cascade come off, because I still think there's a lot of bulk here. So I think that maybe the goal is, maybe the thing to do, as Michael said, is to, you know, cut back the L so that it aligns with that of the neighbor, and then maybe that will just seem a little tighter. I don't, I'm not sure. You know, I've been a little back and forth about the greenhouse in the back, which adds, again, more bulk, but it seems appropriate. What I, what bothers me a little bit is that pier at the end. I feel like that, that was lower in the last rendition, and I feel as though it should come down. And the, this issue, the funny thing about the lot line windows is I actually wish there were more, because I see this wall as a big mass, and that contributes to my feeling that it is just big. And if there was, if there were a few more windows, like breaking it up, it would make me feel a little better, would humanize it for me a little more. So those would be my recommendations. But I think that the project has approved, improved significantly, and I do agree that overall the design is very well done, and that's it.
Okay, great. And so now Commissioner Hallford Smith, I think you've been through everyone. I don't know if you've now had a chance to think about it some more.
Yes, thanks. Well, I, yeah, I appreciate listening to the, to the applicant and, and hearing everyone's comments. I had some similar comments to Michael Goldblum regarding the, what they've done to the top floor of the original building is they've raised the roof, and I think that they need, they need to maintain the original roofline and those smaller windows to- to keep the original massing of the original house intact. And I think of the the L, I agree that the that the the back should align with the neighbor so it doesn't project past that. I do think it's it's quite a lot of mass back there. But I know it's a sort of a unique location in the donut at the end of the donut and at the end of the district. So I guess this couldn't, if the original house volume is maintained, then I guess it's okay to add this mass in the back. And I might, I was actually concerned about the windows in the front. I know that 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 what most people were focused on, but the original wood windows, and they they don't look in terrible condition to me. I've seen much, much worse conditioned windows. And I would really hope that they could try to restore that instead of trying to replace them. And I think replacing the shutters is is appropriate for the ones that are there now are not original.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks. And Commissioner Goldblum and Commissioner Shamir Baron, I might want to just come back to you as well to comment on the front. So Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I I forgot it. I think that the retention of the north light, such as it is, is right on the edge of facadeism in almost a literal sense. But I think the fact that it does angle forward and that there is a volume to it, even in its truncated form, would make it acceptable. I think that the choice to go to the historically appropriate shutters is, you know, in other words, to to predate the shutters, backdate the shutters such as it is, is an appropriate choice. I'm sad about it, but I think it's appropriate because I think it does really remove that 20th century, early 20th century lyrical charm of of the building and kind of corrects it. But I I do think it's acceptable and appropriate. And I think that the replacement of the windows, I agree with Ann, I think that we should dig into that, especially the ground, the the parlor floor windows where where they're very unusual and very elegant. And if they are replaced, if the staff does find that it's appropriate for them to be replaced, I would just make extra sure that the muntens are the right dimension because these are very, very delicate muntens. So just, you know, it's it, that's not easy with simulated redivided lights. So they should just do their best on it.
Commissioner Shamir Baron, did you want to comment on the windows at the front and the skylight? Do we, oh, I think we've, she's not with us anymore. Okay, so so I think what we've heard today is, and I want to thank commissioners for your comments on this and many aspects to this, but I think that the comments are, you know, pretty well synthesized here. And I think that that everybody thinks it's sort of, for the most part, everybody thinks it's going in the right direction. And I think with some few more adjustments to the bulk at the back and some suggestions that were made or aligning the L with the adjacent L, keeping the roof line and the width of the window openings and also exploring the proportions of the windows on the addition that with some of those changes, the scale of the overall addition at the rear may be may be adjusted in a way that people commissioners can find appropriate. So I think that that's a matter of sort of tweaking some of the elements at this point. And then I think on the front, we, I think, should have a little bit more information about the windows. I think we have some comments that still would like to see those windows preserved. And if not able to be preserved, then truly replicated. So I think we'll want to look at that a little more carefully. So I think we have not enough for a vote today, but I think it's going in the right direction and we're very close and we'll have you back as quickly as we can. So we'll take no action and we'll move to the next item now.
The last item of today is public meeting item number three, LPC 21-02432, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 2072, lot 1, 176 Washington Park in the Fort Greene Historic District, an Italianate style rowhouse built circa 1868. The application is to modify façades and dormers, install windows and construct a rooftop bulkhead, screens and railings, and to demolish a garage and construct a new building on a portion of the lot. This was last presented at the public hearing of March 9, 2021, and no action was taken at that time.
Hey, commissioners, the applicants have entered the meeting and the staff will introduce the project after the proceedings have been opened.
Okay, so we will go ahead and do that right now. Commissioner Holford Smith, will you make a motion to open the proceedings?
I'll move.
Thank you, Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, proceedings are open and the staff may begin and applicants may pick up from there.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Julianne Wiesner Kinesi Preservation Staff. The proposal, as presented at the public hearing of March 9, was for modifications to the existing rowhouse, the demolition of the garage and the construction of a new building. The commissioners expressed a consensus of approval for some of the modifications to the existing rowhouse, including the creation of a window opening, the construction of the rooftop bulkheads and mechanical screen and the installation of roof railings, as well as the demolition of the garage and construction of a building at the rear of the lot. Some commissioners expressed concerns about the lack of replication of the historic brownstone lintels and details at the rowhouse and the redesign of the dormers not being harmonious enough to the house and neighboring properties. Additionally, the commissioners asked that the applicants explore whether or not the rowhouse may have had a cornice historically at the rear facade, and if so, to consider reinstating the cornice. Finally, a number of commissioners expressed concerns about the design of the new building, specifically the height and placement of the front screen wall and its relationship to the adjacent rowhouses, which are outside of the historic district, as well as the use of Corten steel at the base. The applicants have revised the proposal and would like to discuss how their changes respond to the commissioners' comments.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Mary Kay Judy, I'm an architectural conservator. And as Julianne just mentioned, we were last here on March 9 and we took the comments under consideration. We spent a lot of time looking again at historic photos and also spent time in the neighborhood looking at how cornice has wrapped other rowhouses in the area. And I think the time is running late, so without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to our design team. And that would be Ted Keane will be talking about 176 Washington and Tom Main is here to talk about the addition in the carriage house. I think Ted, are you here?
Just to get out of, excuse me, just out of an abundance of caution, I'm getting messages that maybe the proceedings weren't open. So if if that is not the case, could we do that? Or if so, state that for the record.
They were open.
Thank you.
Yeah, we opened the proceedings.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for having us back. So I'm here with Tom Main, who's also going to be speaking regarding the carriage house. So we worked together on this project. I'm going to primarily be presenting the townhouse changes. You know, but we work together on both components. And as just a reminder of the site, we are at Washington Park and Willoughby, a very prominent kind of corner of the block, Willoughby as it enters Fort Greene Park.
I think you muted yourself. Can we, here, I've requested to unmute you. There you go.
Okay, thank you. So looking at the site again, just to refresh, we are at the corner site here. It is part of four buildings that were built together in 1868. So we're at 176. And we're looking, you know, it's kind of a a good position for us to have these other four buildings that were built around the same period. So we're looking at those for the some of the historic details. Tom is going to speak about the carriage house, but the overall site strategy, as you recall, it's kind of a unique corner condition where we have the the prominent kind of street wall of Fort Greene Park. And then turning the corner in a 4,000 square foot lot, so it's a very large lot, where we're using that kind of corner condition as a landscaped element, as a buffer, creating a courtyard and then a carriage house in addition to the back, which is more in the context now of Willoughby, which is a smaller scale, about a three story scale versus the front, which is a a four story 55 foot townhouse.
Mute it again.
It automatically goes to mute for some reason. To show you the existing on the left, to show you the existing condition right now, it's actually been abandoned for a while. It's really needing a complete restoration. So it is a renovation of interior exterior. So we are putting quite a bit of effort into restoring these elements on the interior that, you know, we aren't presenting here, but that are really a part of the character of the building. So the overall strategy has really been to keep what's there, to work with what's there and bring back its original character as much as possible. So we are really committed to a faithful restoration. And we've been looking at the adjacent buildings for kind of reference on the window surrounds at the cornice. So two doors down is 174. We've found good documentation from the existing there. And what's, you know, we're able to kind of scaffold and get a little bit more just to to know that it is looking to have that amount of detail, even though, you know, in the rendering, it's hard to represent that. Just to give an overview, it is quite a bit of work that we're doing to restore this building, you know, from the structure all the way out. So looking at the, some of the feedback we got last time was really to make sure that we are keeping the quality and the character when we restore this back to its original brownstone facade, which we are doing. We did bring back some of the elements that were discussed last time relating to this corner condition. So it is the corner of a townhouse of the block. And so the rustification, the coins at the corner, which we do have kind of some elements remaining that was stuccoed over and some of the detail was lost. We are going to bring all that back. We so we, that was was something that we kind of thought was, you know, a good suggestion that we kind of bring this more sharp corner, which is kind of the overall concept for the project, that this really is a jewel at the corner and that we're bringing this kind of landscape into the site and that the addition is kind of in a contrast. We're not kind of competing with this historic character. So we are looking to restore this full brownstone with the window surround. So again, we're kind of working with what's there, this kind of a context and the building, you know, building back and bringing that character, but not necessarily bringing elements that, you know, are are no longer there, that we're not trying to kind of, you know, bring those kind of facial elements that have been lost. And they're kind of no longer there, but we feel like the pieces that we do bring back will bring all the way back to its original character. In addition to the front cornice, we we discussed last time that the there was some interest from the Victorian Society and other comments that, you know, the brownstone typically at a corner, the cornice will wrap the corner. We do have a condition here where we have a chimney that was part that was added, it's not original to the building, that we do need to keep. It is part of the kind of mechanical system of the building. But we do want to bring that cornice back. We thought it, we looked at the reference of the site and kind of document what was there and the silhouette of the stucco that's there. We do believe now that that cornice probably did turn the corner, although we have no documentation of that. So we do want to restore the face shot as well as the corners all the way around the corner. And to deal with this kind of unusual condition that we do have a chimney there, we did feel it was important that the edge of the cornice remain. So that does kind of expand over this this element. But we felt like the silhouette, the sharp line of the cornice was really an important element to turn the corner, even though it's not kind of a historic condition with the chimney there. Just the other elements, I mean, I'm going more detail here, but we are restoring all of the mansard roof slate materials as well as the window surrounds and the cornice. So these are the cornice I mentioned at 174, so two doors down, which according to the historic tax photos is the closest representation. So we are looking to kind of use that as our model and we will be restoring that as well as the, or bringing that back as well as doing the facial elements of the brownstone around. And we don't have a cornice at the mansard roof, which we have remnants of currently, which is pretty bad shape. But we will be able to use that to build back to represent that. So the window surrounds, we're also restoring using 174 as a reference. Again, that was a very, we feel a very nice representation of what was there and as well as the brackets. So the windows and brackets on the floor levels will be restored. So the upper floor has been quite a bit of damage and roof will be rebuilt. We do have luckily some remaining in the back and on the side. It's been lost on the front, but we'll be using that as our representation as we fully restore that roof. So a little bit about the kind of articulation. So it's hard to show in renders, but we are looking to restore the brownstone with the with the stone lines as well as the articulation at the corners. This is kind of a photo of kind of the history of the building. So it is kind of an interesting history, as you know, that on the site in a very kind of strong prominent location. So it's kind of really bringing back those those most characteristic elements of the building and really bringing it its prominence back at that corner. The other element that's kind of one topic of discussion last time was about how to deal with these existing openings at the mansard, which are not historic openings. We had a couple of different approaches and we had looked at one before where we were trying to represent kind of more of articulated windows, which are in the historic context. But at the same time, we felt it was a little bit competing. I think some comments from the commission as well felt like it's not a historic, so why compete in that way? So we were looking at more like a studio window effect, like it is a modern open window. And it is an existing condition, so we're looking to maintain it, but not to compete. So and this, we thought was the best approach, that is more like a cut or a carve a minimal kind of element, which allows the historic to kind of represent without competing with that. And so it's kind of like allows the historic to be more prominent in that way. So this is a view of what we had previously, which we did look at other options as well as I know there were some comments about maybe, you know, centering the windows and so forth. We felt that it's really working with the, again, the kind of overall strategy of working with the building that's there and not trying to kind of create a new opening where there wasn't one. So we kind of felt like the history of the building was there, but we wanted to articulate it without competing with historic. So we felt like this approach was had a much better kind of scale to the building and so forth. So this, on the left is what we presented previously and on the right is the updated proposal, which includes the additional articulation, you know, more of a face shot and the brown and the cornice, which now wraps the corner, and then the new representations at the openings. In addition to this, we are restoring the original door. We're also restoring the blue stone paving at the sidewalk, replacing all the windows. So it is quite a bit of work. And we feel that it's kind of like it's bringing this building back and it's bringing back its its character and its prominence, which is really a strong, you know, an overall strategy for the site, that this element is really the 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 corner piece that locks the building, locks the site. And then there's a courtyard in the back for the for the addition. So Tom's going to speak about the addition part now. We've also made some changes to that based on comments.
Perfect. Yeah, are you going to move this? Okay. Mary Kay introduced exactly what I'm going to talk about today and that we responded to the three major comments we gave. The the lowering of the street facade wall, the detachment of that wall and the changing of the Corten steel. Ted, next slide? Okay, so we can look at the differentiation and several things happens. I don't have my drawing tool here, so I can't draw, but it'll be obvious here. I don't have my drawing tool here, so I can't draw, but it'll be obvious here. One thing that happened that was really interesting is that the detachment ended up being really a very interesting device, and that it makes a separation between the new building, which is honoring history in its, its typology and its use of brick, and the delicate kind of separation from the traditional building, the historic building and the new building. And, and the lowering of it, actually, you can see now the proportion between window and window, and the top element actually kind of increased the, it's just a much nicer proportion, and it's really, I think, even stronger in a way. And both those things were just extremely kind of useful, and your comments were, in our sense, very, very positive for us. The corten has been changed to a sealed steel that, that no longer is an issue with rust. And it's, I think it's pretty straightforward, and hopefully is fairly evident by the drawing itself. And that, again, I'm looking at it again, and the separation seems to be actually quite useful, and the lowering, the same. And it keeps the continuity of the brick and the brick together in a way that's nice when you separate the cornice. And, and the proportion between the existing building and the townhouse also seems to be the slightly smaller scale seems to be useful, as this is a transitional element, which we talked about, which is what it is. It's really the, the ending of this building. It's, it's the next facade, if you will, the continuation of the street facade and the edge facade facing the townhouse, which makes it kind of a very interesting kind of hybrid, actually. I think, Ted, is anything really specific that you, you want to add to that? Because the, the brick is, it's extremely, it's a Danish brick, which is an absolutely amazing brick, that's going to be something I think everybody's going to appreciate, and it definitely makes the transition between the townhouse and the existing community. And the, the metal is going to be a little bit greenish. It'll have a little different kind of coloration, and it'll be definitely neutral. We want it to essentially go away, et cetera. And the, again, the separation, which is even clearer here, seems to be very useful. And of course, now it's interesting, because the metal is coming up, and it's becoming a detail, if you may, right? I see a couple of you shaking your head, and it ended up being kind of just an obvious one, once we moved it away, it became clear that this, the pushback of the garage floor. And again, what was important is we didn't want to see the garage door. It's neutral, right? We have one, no notion of the pragmatism of a garage, et cetera. And then, and then as we moved it, that, that line went right up between, and then of course, it froze completely at the deck level. And so it was kind of a very natural progression of thinking, actually, that came out of the critique. I think that's, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. Let me turn to Rich and ask him to summarize any letters that we received. Rich?
Yes, so we just read one letter from HTC in opposition.
Okay, all right. We do have a question now. Commissioner Lutsey, please go ahead. Oh, Commissioner Lutsey, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I do.
Okay, great.
What's the surface on the side of the, of the historic, the brownstone building? Is there, is there just inside the wrought iron fence? Is that grass or is that paving?
So it's a landscape, this part here?
Yeah, the floor, the floor a bit. Is it grass?
Yeah, only a ground covered, ground covered landscape, yeah.
Okay, all right. That's, thank you.
All right, other questions? Okay, oh yes. Commissioner Lutsey, do you have another?
No, I don't.
No?
No, I don't, sorry.
That's okay. Okay, so if we don't have any other questions, I think we'll move right into our discussion. And again, as was presented, I think there were comments about working out the restoration details on the main building, and thinking that, you know, a real restoration of the main building would complement and be a nice contrast with the proposed addition rear building. And, and so, and, and the applicants have made some changes on that front and presented those today. There were comments about the dormer, and I think many commissioners felt that it didn't need to replicate the original dormer, since it was a modified opening, but that it should be more harmonious, and so they have addressed the dormer. And, and then there were some questions, some comments about the screen wall and other elements at the rear. So why don't we start our discussion? Commissioner Goldblum, I'm going to start with you. I think last time you focused your comments really on the restoration work, the cornice in particular, and, and the idea of doing a more harmonious dormer. And I think, though, with the rear, you actually felt that the, as a transition, the sort of deconstructed design relating to both this house and the other houses was an interesting complement to the building. And so I'd like to hear your thoughts with the changes today.
Thank you. I think that the additional detail that's been added to the stucco restoration of the, of the original building is successful. I think that the extension of the cornice around the back is successful and interesting. It may not be totally historically accurate, but I think it gets the job done in an effective way. I think that the windows that we see here are toned down, but I don't buy the argument that they were, they're there and therefore they're, they're good, they're okay, because they're there as a modern intrusion. You're not keeping them, you're, you're getting rid of them. These are all new things. There's nothing existing about these. So I, I don't, I believe that the front dormer needs to be studied further in some way that either restores what was existing historically, or that at least complements the building in a contemporary way, whether it's a quote unquote north light, or some other manner that in, in some way strengthens the relationship with the building below and doesn't have what I think here has a, if you didn't know that there were windows there before in the badly renovated previous state, you would think that this was a mistake, and I think that therefore it is a mistake and should be reconsidered. I think that, that the modifications done to the carriage house only make it better. I, I think that it's an assertive, perhaps even a little bit aggressive, balls-out kind of, you know, new thing. And I think that that's okay. I think that the changes that have been made make it better. I think that the reveal pulls it away enough to once again assert that it is a new structure that seeks to relate to, but not ape the existing. I think that the dropping of the top line gestures to the cornices next door without giving in to them, and therefore is a, is a gesture of relationship that makes the proportions of the object itself better, and at the same time relating to the context a little bit more transparently. I think that, I thought the corten was fine before, even if it stained the concrete a little bit, but certainly the use of the dark steel carries across the intention of a base, and analogizes to the brownstone, or the, you know, the darker toned bases of the townhouses. And I generally beforethought and continue to think that this is an uncompromisingly modern addition to the neighborhood that engages in a conversation that is mature and sophisticated, and is something that we should and do celebrate and encourage and will be proud of.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Bland, I think you also, I think, thought the rear building was successful, thought it could be lowered just slightly, and also focused on the restoration comment. So how are you feeling at this point?
Well, I was feeling great before, and I'm feeling even better now. I think the restoration aspects on the main house are much more successful. The changes that have been made are appropriate and right, and more or less followed, I think, the guidelines that we set out. The, the rear house, whatever we're calling this, is just simply fabulous. I mean, I'm so excited that we have the ability to have architecture like this in historic districts, not just on the fringe or on the outside, or, this is right in the heart of a really important series of buildings on a super important park. It's just, it's just hard to overemphasize how wonderful this building is, and how it became appreciably better by making very, very few and subtle changes. So hats off. I mean, this is really, really significant. I think it's, it's probably the most exciting, and to my mind, maybe the best small piece of architecture that I've been able to participate in, being part of the, I hope, approval of in my 12 years on the commission. It's just very exciting to see this.
Thank you. Right, Commissioner Lutsey, I think you had some concerns about it last time, particularly the piers and the screen wall, and I wondered where you are now.
So I do want to say that I think the, as Tom Main said, this detachment of the wall from neighboring building, it just made a, it makes a huge difference in so, so many ways. First of all, now the facade of the new building speaks to the building next to it, and it doesn't overwhelm it, which is unbelievable. So the integrity of both structures is, you know, very palpable. And bringing down the top of the building so that it's closer to the cornice also humanizes the structure. And then changing the, changing the base to the darker steel, I think, actually makes, also goes a long way to anchoring it more solidly in, in almost a very elegant way. So, you know, hard to, and I can't, and I'm imagining that once I see these great bricks, Tom, really, I'm really going to think that the whole thing holds together very, very nicely. It's, I think it's a, it's, I think it works well as a wonderful new piece of modern architecture, and it respects the row that's next to it. So I feel much better about that. I can't really see where you, I did have some problems with the piers, and I can't really see that you made any adjustments to that. And I still think that I would, I would modify just one of them a bit. I thought you brought it down a little bit, but I'm not sure. Maybe you did, but not the one on the outside, but the one to the left. I would just bring it down a lot more, but together, I think the whole piece hangs together well, and, and it's, it's a terrific addition to the landscape. I'm really glad, I'm going to just speak to the landscaping for a minute. I'm very glad that there's going to be, you know, not only shrubs and bushes, but this, you know, nice grass at the base, so it softens all of the, you know, all of the building around it, and it's, you know, and it speaks to the park across the street, which is very important. In terms of the historic, in terms of the, the brownstone, I really am going to, I think that, that Fred and also Michael spoke, you know, addressed this very well. I would like to say that I think it makes sense to work, to work with staff on some of the details of this building. It doesn't need to be slavish to the, you know, the historicism of this building, which isn't, you know, isn't as present as we would have liked, but I think we want to make sure that this, that this building on the corner connects very solidly the rest of the row along the park. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, I think you also had some comments about the lowering of the screen wall or setting it back, and I wonder if the adjustments today have had what your thoughts are now.
Yes, I, I think conceptually, this is an interesting, interesting group of buildings. You know, on one side, it's historical, but not quite historical. And I'm not quite sure if the cornice really works, but, but that's neither here or there. And, and I love the transition from a kind of semi-historical to this modern piece at the back, this false front facade, and it, and it, and the sculptural qualities of it. And I agree with everyone that the reveal is, works beautifully, and the proportions are nice. The only issue I have, it, it doesn't say much about that historic community at all. It's just, it's just a false facade, and it could, you know, step back. I approve this, but I think it could have said more about the historic district, about that place. That false facade could have given us much more message architecturally than it's doing now, but that's just, I, I can approve it.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I think the, creating that reveal next to the adjacent building made a huge impact on the, on the design, and lowering the top of the screen wall. It just, I think everyone's already said everything about it, but I think it was, it was a very, very good move to really set the new building apart and maintain the integrity of the, of the row of the existing building. And I think using the darker steel also helps reinforce that, as opposed to the, to the corten. So I'm fine with the addition, I think it's great.
Okay.
Looking at the, looking at the original building, there's an image, page 13, and you can see a very strong horizontal of the window hoods of the original, of the other buildings. It doesn't carry through to the corner building, and I wonder if they could work with staff on trying to recreate that. Maybe they don't have to make it a pure historicist detail, but it feels like that momentum just kind of stops. And I think that it, that the facade would be more energized by having those, that the horizontal detail over the windows. And the dormers, I was okay with having sort of asymmetrical dormers, but I think pushing them back and trying to de-emphasize them in the way they did, it does in a way look like a mistake or something left over. So I think that's something that they could also work with staff, perhaps just making it more symmetrical. They don't have to, they don't have to match the, the original, you know, surround.
Okay, all right, great. So I think we have a lot of support here for the proposal as revised today, and I think that the comments really are that the restoration work could still be explored with staff, or be studied with staff to ensure that we have details that enhance the feeling of the buildings and its relationship to the rest of the row, including, you know, considering the door hoods and some of the other, the window hoods and some of the other details, and that the applicant continue to re-study the dormer window to also sort of relate it to the age and style of the building a little more closely. So I think we can vote to approve it with the modifications that they continue to work with the staff on these restoration details. Commissioner Goldblum, would you be able to make that motion? Are you here?
Yes, yes.
I thought I was unmuted. I apologize. Sure, I'll do it. In regards to LPC docket number 21-02432176, Washington Park, Fort Greene Historic District, the application is to modify facades and dormers, install windows and construct rooftop bulkhead screens and railings, and demolish a garage and construct a new building on a portion of the lot. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District. And I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that this resurfacing of the altered facades of the row house and replacement of mod infill will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features. That the proposed basement level window opening at the south facade, side facade of the row house will be created at plain masonry and is compatible with the pattern of punched openings at this facade in terms of placement, shape, style, size and window configuration. That the rooftop bulkheads and mechanical screen will be small in relation to the size of the house, setback from the front facade, simply designed and typical in terms of material and finish, helping them remain in keeping with the utilitarian rooftop accretions sometimes found at houses throughout the historic district. That the placement, material, size and finish of the rooftop guardrail will help it recall the cresting historically found at some mansard roofs in the historic district. That the existing 1940s garage is a utilitarian secondary structure, which is not unique or significant as an example of buildings of this type. Therefore, its demolition will not detract from the site or from the historic district. That the presence of a small house at the rear of the lot will be in keeping with rear extension and ancillary buildings, sometimes located behind row houses at corner lots within the historic district, as well as with the specific development of this lot. That the new house will abut the main row house at secondary facades at the rear extension and will not damage or obscure any significant fabric or views of the historic row house from public thoroughfares. That the proposed house will be set back from the street and a portion of the site will remain as open space, thereby maintaining the presence of a yard at the rear of the lot, which is typical for corner lots throughout this historic district. That the new house will be at the very end of the lot, abutting a row of buildings on Willoughby Avenue. And because it will not extend further north than the existing garage, will not impact the reading of the row of buildings or the presence of green space. That the contemporary design will be evocative of secondary facades and ancillary buildings in this historic district in terms of its materials and color palette, rectilinear forms, use of punched openings, ratio of solid to void, floor to ceiling height, depth of infill and simple detailing. And that the overall massing of the house, variations in planes and the rectilinear forms of the components will form a cohesive design while eliciting a deconstructed view of the massing of historic houses within the historic district. That the orientation and footprint of the house featuring some facades that slightly angled in relation to the street grid will reflect the unique angled footprint of the lot. That the size, pattern and finishes of the brickwork and metal cladding will support the unity of the composition and subtly reflect the modernity of the house. That the house's neutral color palette and simple details will counterbalance the expressiveness of the building's massing, helping it to harmonize with the historic row house on a lot. And that the vehicular entrance doors will be well integrated into the design. I recommend that the applicant work with staff to continue to refine the details of the historic restoration components of the project with a special, with a special focus on the mansard windows facing the park.
I'm muted. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Lutsey, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Bar? Sorry, she's gone. She's gone, okay. Commissioner Bland?
Ah, yes, aye.
Okay. And Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutsey?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with six in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved and please continue to work with the staff on the restoration details. And that concludes our day. Thank you, everyone, for participating today. Thank you, commissioners, for your thoughtful comments today and your long hours that you devote to the city every week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.